Cory, you're good whenever you're ready.
All right, six o'clock, we'll get started, I'll say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We got everybody here, Sarah is coming in remote tonight, so...
She is on line now.
I wasn't ordering changes to the agenda.
No.
Not a motion to accept the agenda as is?
Actually, I'll do that.
Say it. Naomi makes a motion, can I get a second?
Jeff?
Second, Jeff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sarah, you coming in? She dropped?
She's on mute.
Okay. Okay, motion passes, um, okay, consent agenda, any questions or changes on that? Okay, if not, I'm looking for motion to accept the consent agenda as is.
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
It's a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Naomi, give us a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Sarah, I'm not hearing you, you were trying to get in. Jason, you see me on there now?
I can see you on there, I see you on there.
Sarah, you're on mute, just FYI, from what I see. Okay, um...
I hear you now.
All right, perfect. Um, okay, city council minutes from January 16th, any changes, corrections, additions?
I thought they looked fine, I don't know if Sarah had any, but I thought they were good.
Okay, so I make a motion to accept?
I will do that.
Okay, Naomi makes a motion to accept, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Stephanie does a second, all right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you, Sarah. All right, we'll take a couple of comments, anybody got anything they want to chit chat about tonight? Other than what's on the agenda. Okay, going on screen twice. All right, who wanted to share a report, that would be next time we're on it.
Yep.
All right, so one thing I've got to do here, Giving Hearts Day is coming up on Thursday, we do a proclamation yearly on that, so we read that, so we can get that officially into the books. All right, proclamation is the city of Horace, mayor proclaimed February 8th to be Giving Hearts Day, whereas the goal of Giving Hearts Day is to raise awareness for the charitable nonprofit sector and its organizations in North Dakota, Northwest Minnesota, online giving, volunteerism, the donation of goods, and to provide donors with the opportunity to multiply the results of their giving, and whereas Giving Hearts Day is a powerful example of the private sector providing assistance to charitable nonprofit organizations that offer vital services to improve the quality of life for many members of our community, and whereas the charitable nonprofit sector supports individuals and family with quality programs, materials and funds that promote, encourage, and sustain independence and self-efficiency, and whereas in order to provide these benefits charities need ongoing funds, volunteers, and goods to continue providing long-term sustainable services to our residents in need, and whereas their charities are demonstrated in need for collaboration and resources, and have joined together for this 24-hour fundraising event that is dedicated to inspire online donations for charities on GivingHeartsDay.org, now therefore I, Cory Peterson, mayor of the city of Horace, hereby proclaim February 8th, 2024 as Giving Hearts Day in Horace, and call on public officials, businesses, and community leaders, and all of the Horace residents to observe this day with appropriate activities and programs, recognize charitable nonprofits, their staff, and volunteers who provide essential services to our community, and support Giving Hearts Day by volunteering or providing financial support to local charities in Horace, and across North Dakota, and Northwest Minnesota on Giving Hearts Day. So, we'll just make sure that's in the books, and just remember everybody that February 8th is Giving Hearts Day, and is a good organization, I would encourage everybody to get involved on the 8th. So we want to make a motion to accept the proclamation?
I'll make the motion, accept that proclamation.
Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Stephanie, a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, next thing we have on here is the gates at Greyhawk and Maple Lakes. Brett, who do you want to have conversation with first?
So it's basically requests from Horace Fire to discuss their concerns in regards to the gates at Greyhawk and Maple Lakes. Right before the last meeting, they gave me a letter explaining their concerns about it, that's in the packet, we had that uploaded there on Saturday, and then council got a copy of that letter, the meeting before, so if you're at the meeting before, you should have a copy of that one there, but we asked Chris Mahoney, Fire Chief, and Randy Hyatt from the Fire Board to come and just talk if they had, explain their concerns, and touch base with you, so...
Chris, Randy, you guys want to just come on up and introduce yourselves, and go ahead and kind of do a takeaway on that letter you wrote to us, and...
Okay, Chris Mahoney, Fire Chief, Randy Hyatt, President of the District Board. So, I know the Greyhawk gates, and there's two gates in town, but I know they've been a hot topic even before I came here. We've already ran into issues where it impeded public safety and responses, there are solutions out there for the traffic and the other issues that I've heard about, especially rewatching recordings, the gates aren't the answer, we're hindering public safety with those gates up. The last incident we had was on Christmas, it delayed the ambulance getting through. Looking back at some of the other notes, I was looking at the September 18th board meeting, or council meeting, and even the mayor stated that three to five minutes can mean life or death, and the gate delayed the ambulance five minutes of trying to go and have staff run out there, open the gates, get the ambulance through. So there are other solutions, but a gate's not it. And I'd ask that they either be opened and removed.
Okay, any other comments on that, about the one in the south end of town?
That one too, after doing some digging on that one, because that's attached to the south end of that neighborhood with gravel road, correct? Fire code dictates that any neighborhoods with 30 or more residentials have to have two means of egress, and there's only one main entrance, and that would satisfy as a secondary, so that as a public road can't be blocked either. Fire code dictates that public roadways cannot be blocked.
All right, any questions here for Chris on this one? Go ahead.
Okay, so you and I talked a little bit, I'll say probably a month ago, I can't remember the exact date. During that talk, we discussed what happened from a broad level, Christmas Day. So, and I'll try to keep it at a broad level to not make sure we don't identify anybody, but from a high level, the role that the fire department played that day is what?
Medical responders.
First response?
Yep.
Okay, how many, how many firefighters were on that call?
Six.
Six, okay. So, did you guys stop at the residence before continuing to the gate?
Yeah.
So that you had first responders on the scene?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you go to the gate, and is there a lock on the gate?
There is a nut and bolt.
A nut and a bolt, okay, which is usually pretty easy to undo, except for that day we had a weather event that doesn't normally occur. I've lived here for 23 years, I can't say I've seen that kind of significant ice in that whole 23 years I've been here, okay? You have a nut and a bolt that's pretty easy to undo, you have a gate that is fully functional, I mean, it doesn't even squeak. And yes, there was something that occurred that day, a weather event that occurred that day, that slowed you guys down, so my, my other question is, was there any radio communication between the fire department and the ambulance as to their approach coming to that residence?
Nope.
None?
Nope.
Okay, why not?
We have shared channels, but the ambulance service also has their own dispatch.
Okay, because I mean that, it would solve a lot of the problems we're talking about here, just, you know, radio ahead saying, hey, just so you're aware, that, that road is closed, there are road closed signs on that road. So I did talk to the sheriff's department, you know, you mentioned, you know, two access points, so is there a second access point for Greyhawk, at all?
Uh, that one, I'm not sure, I don't believe so.
Okay, well, you checked on at least Maple Lakes down there, now Maple Lakes was put in, pretty much out of convenience, it's easier probably to repair a gravel road than a, than a blacktop road, which didn't make any of the residents down there happy about it, but sticking with Greyhawk, from your opinion, could things have been done better? Could there have been radio communication to prevent them traveling down, for whatever reason, a winding neighborhood, I think residential road, instead of coming down a main artery?
It depends where they're located.
Right, but could radio, radio communication have prevented this, saying that, you know, there's possible gate up?
I mean, there's always the what if.
True, there's always the what if on, you know, we have a significant weather event.
What actually happened, though.
And you see all the residents here, we got probably equal as many emails that are worried about, both, both neighborhoods do not have sidewalks, the residents there have children, that they ride bicycles, I mean, you got a lot of kids that ride bicycles, and you worry about somebody getting hit by a car. If that happens, you know, what, what do we say then? Oh, maybe we should have kept the gate closed, so we're in a tough position, we have the majority, and I mean the majority of residents saying, guys, we don't want that, until there's some sort of a solution to alleviating traffic coming through there, we don't want that, and I can say the same thing about Maple Lakes, there's supposed to be a development going into the west there, that would give them a second, we talked about, and we've gone further to talk about, you know, do we even keep the entrance on 72nd Street up to County Road 14, or do you do away with that, and make them go south? So what, what I'm getting at is, there's a lot of different ways to approach our talk about this. The email we received was a lot more pointed, or the letter that you sent was a lot more pointed than what you just let on, okay? I, I, I talked to the state fire marshal, I talked to FM ambulance today, hell, I talked to the sheriff's department on Friday, I wanted to get all their opinions, and all of them, all of them said, yeah, what we saw for a weather event on Christmas Day isn't normal. Now, was there any of them that said, you know, I understand your point that a medical call every second counts, yeah, I get it, I do, but what are you going to say to a family if your kid gets hit by a car?
I'm not saying remove the gates and just be done, I'm saying there's other solutions for safety, a gate is not safety.
So, so you want us to try to increase enforcement, and I told you that when we had our conversation, we're willing to open up our checkbook to buy another sheriff's deputy, I literally told, told the sheriff, what's it going to cost? I don't care what it costs, what's it going to cost, just tell us and we'll just, we'll rubber stamp it, but we can't get that because there's a lack of deputies everywhere right now, and we're in a no-win situation here, I understand your point, I do, when we had our talk, my point to you was, turn around and convince all those people, do we have a solution? Find a way to convince them that, hey, we'll try to keep them safe, but sending us a letter demanding that we open a gate, that's not working with us, that's, that's pretty heavy-handed, okay? And, I mean, I look at all the stuff that has gone on lately with, now I, I go places in town, I have people asking me, what is going on with parking? I have somebody asking me, what is going on with the grade school, and I'm like, the grade school? Well, yeah. I mean, the secretary of the grade school throw all the lost and found clothes away.
And take down art off the walls.
It's just, too much too quick, is what I'm getting at, I mean, like I said, there's a million ways to approach this, and I, I don't know if this is the best approach, now I, I get your point for a gate, but let's be honest about the gate, the gate is fully functional, like I said, I checked both of them today, I took the nut out itself, opened the gate, got work, put it back together, check that gate, I checked that gate actually more than I probably should, but they both function, I realize it might take a couple of seconds to undo that, if we can figure out a better way, you know, let us know. I mean, you even put electronic openers for the gates for, for your email, if that's something we have to look into, then we do that, but, like I said, there's a million ways to do things, and I don't think that approach was appropriate, and I, I don't know how to stress that enough, I mean, it comes down to professionalism, okay? I was very open and honest with you during our conversation at the restaurant, even told you, there was a second gate here in town. Showing that I'm not trying to be dishonest, I'm trying to let you know, this is what you're working against, and like I said, you can turn around, you can see all the people here, we got equal as many emails in my bin or printed out here, of people saying, you know, is this the right thing to do? Are we trying to build a road to alleviate the traffic so that this isn't a problem? We are, but demanding it be done before that road is complete, might be a little soon, same with down in Maple Lakes and Country Acres, there's a new development going in just to the west of it, you know, how, how much further down the road is that before it goes in, and you have your second entrance? You know, the, the one down in Maple Lakes might be easier, you put, you know, weight restrictions on that one, yeah, you can put weight restrictions on, on the one up north too, you still have to have an officer to enforce it, and that's our problem right now, is we, we can't force the sheriff's department to give us an officer, and we don't have the funds to start a police department, and if, I mean, if you try to force us to get a police department just so we have extra staff, funds got to come from somewhere, where do you cut back? So, I, I don't know, I, I'll have, you know, obviously this talk with you, Randy and I are going to have to have talk at another point in time, about something completely different, but I, I ask you, was this the best approach?
Yeah.
Okay, does that, are anybody else want to?
Yeah.
Jeff got his, he's, okay.
I mean, to Jeff's point, when I read your letter, it almost seems as though you're saying that you have jurisdiction over us, is that correct?
Yes.
So you have jurisdiction to take the gate down?
For fire prevention and public safety.
So why are we, why, why is council having to make this decision then tonight?
Because I tried having this conversation.
But if you have the authority, in your view, to do it, why are you putting it on council to take the gate down? You have threatened us with fines daily, you have threatened to call whistleblower hotlines, your letter is very pointed, saying you have the authority to do this, but yet you're making us make the call on it. In my opinion, I agree with Jeff, it was very disheartening to see the lack of collaboration with the city, instead of working with us, you have threatened us, and it's, it's very disheartening, because in my opinion, all in the name of safety, as you say, to open the gate, you're actually putting more lives at risk by opening this gate. These people don't have sidewalks, these children walk to their bus routes, they don't have any way to ride their bike in the summer, go on family walks, the traffic, you are creating a road that is not meant to be an arterial road, and you're making it an arterial road against the governing body, and that's what I'm upset about, so I think it's very dangerous, I think what you are asking is extremely unprofessional. I had looked back at a meeting, and I heard Mr. Mayor state back in April that it was premature to open the gate permanently until 9th was set up and ready to go, we needed to look at that, and we need to be careful with these residents, there are lives here as well, so in my opinion, if you have the authority to do it, I don't see why I need to vote, I'm sorry, Jeff and Stephanie, I don't, I don't feel like I should be voting when it's not under my jurisdiction, and I would like your phone number to be reflected in the meeting minutes, because any problems that arise because of this gate issue, I want our city staff to forward those messages to you, we'll be having every resident call you, because it's on your jurisdiction.
Okay, Stephanie, anything you want to add?
Well, I guess what Naomi brought up, I mean, so I can have some understanding, I mean, if you have the authority to close the gate, then I guess I, I don't know why I don't see the need for council to take up the issue.
We enforce codes, we're asking that the council, because it is your gate, to open it and then remove it.
But your letter, your letter states that you have the authority to do it.
Yes, so I have the authority to tell people to take stuff down.
Well, your, your letter implies that you have the authority to just do it, and so I guess my initial question was, I mean, we don't need to be a stamp of approval then if, if it's your decision and you have the authority. I guess my first question is, this, this letter was with regard to Greyhawk, and so the implementation of the Maple Lakes gate was a little bit later, I don't have much information on that, but the Greyhawk gate, for everybody probably knows, was installed in September of 2020, it's been in place for almost three years.
Correct, and Fire Chief at that time also said no, that...
And it was installed for a specific reason, well, it must have been appropriate to install it back then.
It was against the fire district's wishes, it's always been.
I, I have, I didn't hear, in the time that I'm on council, I guess I can't speak for before I was on council, that there were any, that there were any issues with, with traffic patterns responding to emergency, to emergency calls.
There wasn't anything in the meeting minutes on that?
Not that recall.
No.
We ever had a conversation about that? No, the gate was kind of what the dialogue is for, from what I recall, Jimmy, if you remember anything different, Lucas, but it was mainly the same concerns that you're discussing tonight, and have over the last couple meetings, we talked about, it's more the safety and to cut down traffic of that, because the road was connected when that portion of the wilds was finished, they, the city of West Fargo connected the roads, and then that was the push for having the gate, because the road was connected there, and residents...
And the gate's not locked, I mean, when we initially decided, and I mean, just, just for, I mean, just, just for history too, I mean, we expressly in April only opened the gate for a specific period of time to allow for traffic for construction, and it was only for, and we even discussed then, we were all in agreement that that was actually really only on a trial basis, because we were going to see what traffic patterns looked like, we closed it again, we made it clear, we were all in agreement too that it was premature to open the gate before we had another southern access to, to the neighborhood, I mean, would we be here, if the gate had just stayed closed, would we be here today?
Yeah.
When were you going to bring it up to us?
Well, I brought it up as soon as I got here. I had weekly meetings with your city administrator expressing my concerns over it.
So, so during those, those initial few, few weeks, you made the comment about you'd have to give, you know, key to lock to all, all EMS, first responder vehicles, and that was the, the point where we took the locks off. I don't know why a bolt is in there, I'm assuming it just makes it harder for a resident just to open the gate up and drive through, kind of like problems we're seeing on Wild Avenue, but, you know, at that time, we tried to accommodate by taking all the locks off, I mean, it's, like I said, it's, it has a bolt in it, under normal circumstances, it's very easy, quick to take it apart, I did it today, and what it does is just, yeah, it does alleviate some traffic, and I get it, that it might take, I'll say 20 more seconds, 30 more seconds to, to get through that gate on a normal day, what we saw on Christmas Day was not normal, I would hope you could agree with it, but...
Correct, but there's nothing that says that it won't happen again.
I understand that, I do, I mean, I, I'd be a fool to say otherwise, okay?
Well then, why is there a problem?
Why is there a problem?
You just said that...
Yeah.
It could happen again.
Let me answer.
It could be 25, 30 below.
Let me answer, why is there a problem? Chris, when we had our talk up there, you said you, you rely on hard facts, okay? You're a data person, you rely on hard, hard facts, me too, that, that is literally my job, all right, I am a data person for Microsoft, literally. Is there a likelihood that some kid could get hit while waiting for a bus, you know, at a bus stop? Yeah, if we had more snow on the ground, which would force them to stand on the edge of the street, you run a likelihood of some kid getting hit, and I, like I said, without pointing anybody out, I wish the resident had the medical issue, I wish they could understand or speak to, what do they feel about the whole situation now that they've experienced it? What side would they be on, you know, would they, they want to take the chance of a child or somebody getting hit, or would they understand that, okay, just because an ambulance came down a residential street, it isn't normal, they, it took longer to get there, so I...
And officer enforcement isn't, isn't going to do anything for the problem, it's, it's the traffic, I mean, you're, we would be forcing that road to be something it was never intended to be, it's like a, it's a rural section road, it's a basically one and a half lane with no sidewalks, I mean, that creates a dangerous situation for the residents, how do you balance the safety concerns of everyone in that neighborhood? I mean, their safety concerns have to be taken into account in this decision as well, I feel, and I don't, and I don't know that we're, that we're, that we're doing that right now, it's, it's simply, it's simply premature to open the gate until we have a, a different southern access, and what we learned with opening that gate for the few months that we did on a trial basis, was the level of traffic that was going to funnel right down south from the wilds to Horace, that's a traffic pattern that was never going to reset itself if the gate had stayed open, when CAS 17 opened, it wasn't like people were going to reset their traffic pattern back to what would be roads that can handle that traffic, that was never going to happen, it just created a completely unsafe situation in the neighborhood, which I think probably if the people that live in the neighborhood could easily attest to that, I mean, if it was a situation where we knew the majority of the appropriate traffic pattern would reset to CAS 17 upon road closing, that might be a different conversation, but it was absolutely clear, that, that was never going to happen on its own, and it, and it won't happen with the gate being opened.
I mean, I worry about the safety of the people that are going to be on the streets, that's, I understand that there could be a call, an emergency call, I totally get that, but I think you're going to see more emergency calls with it open, that's my concern, and I am having a lot of heartburn over this, because I will tell you, that road is like one, it's like a one lane, like, it's not even meant to have that amount of traffic on it, so I'm really struggling with this, because you're, you're saying that it's a, it's a safety concern to you, but you're kind of, in my opinion, missing the safety concern in the other side, and frankly, if you have the authority to do it, I would rather that the residents know that I support the residents in this, and I don't, I'm not going to vote on this, if you have the authority to do so, take it down, because I'm not going to do it.
May I jump in here, Cory?
Yep, go ahead, let me bring you up on the volume a little bit, so you can hear you, go ahead.
Forgive me if I'm a little quiet, I'm, I'm dealing with pneumonia, and I didn't want to affect the entire room tonight, I, I hear some really good things, and I, I took a lot of time to read the correspondence from the residents at Greyhawk, and they bring up a really good point, and, and so do our, our council members, and so does Chief Mahoney, and I'll, I'll... I'll, I'll tell you that, I, I know that his letter felt like a little bit of an attack, but, but I'll be fine. It is his job to bring concerns to our attention. And he is bringing a concern to our attention. Now, this one's twofold, right? They have a community that's been in place for well over twenty, we have roads that were not built for the type of traffic that has presented itself in the last several years. And we have an obligation as a city council to do something about it, right? It, it's not up to the fire chief to do something about it. He is required to bring forth the concerns and let us know what falls within fire code. It's our responsibility to then react to that as a council and ensure that we are doing what is necessary to make sure that we are following that fire code. So that means that we do so at a higher risk to residents. And that's a question I've been asking myself for quite some time. No, it does not. I will say very clearly, I don't agree with private gates on public roads. Absolutely, one hundred percent. The city made a mistake years ago in installing private gates onto public roads. I will stand by that. But I will say that if we remove that gate, we have an obligation to ensure the safety of our residents, which means we need to make some changes before doing so. Does anyone on the council disagree with that?
Sarah, I mentioned to you that I would like to see Ninth at least underway. It is on the CIP for 2024. And I feel like we could be working collaboratively with the fire chief and allowing another access. And I think I visited with you a little bit about that and you said we could kind of chat. I don't think it's appropriate to remove the gate until we have another solution for the traffic.
Well, let's talk about that. And I, I think that's a bigger discussion. I don't know if we'll solve that here. But I think before we remove the gate, that we have a solution in hand and a plan in place as top priority to ensure that we can, in my mind, assist both our local, for, for district and the residents that live out there. We did a trial run. We opened the gate. The traffic patterns were more than anyone anticipated. Twenty years ago, could that have been perceived? Absolutely not. If I recall based on the meetings, it was very clear that West Fargo didn't even communicate with us that they weren't connecting this road. So we're at a little bit of a disadvantage here, right? But I think we can do something about it. I think we can be collaborative and I think we can direct this moving forward. Does it mean that there's going to be a solution this evening? That I can't say. It sounds like we have enough division in the room that there's, you know, one decision is going to make half the people mad and the other decision will make half the people mad. I, I think that we need to collaboratively look at what is the best possibility. But I wholeheartedly think we need to have a plan to remove the gate and have safety measures in place moving forward because this is not conducive to the type of community that we are going to be in the next five to ten years. And so if that means putting in sidewalks, if that means widening streets, if that means adjusting traffic patterns, if that means looking at Ninth, we need to do that as council.
Okay. Go ahead.
Uh, we're having issues with the live stream. Do you want me to go live on it?
We, it is recording. Yeah. At least it shows it's recording.
It's, it's not, it's not streaming or it's not recording?
Yeah, our, the fire hall recorder that runs from that equipment to that and connects us to the live stream is showing it is offline and I can't get it back online right now.
Can we just make sure we're recording though?
Yeah, it shows it's recording and I have it recording on Teams.
Okay, thank you.
So as long as we have at least somebody connected via Teams, we should have that connection still. So, and I created a hotspot on my phone because I was having problems with getting connected.
So Chris, you want any comments on what Sarah was talking about?
I agree with what she's saying.
So you're willing to, like, let us figure out a plan before we start taking stuff down?
I'm willing to work on a plan, but the previous conversations I had was that gate's not coming down.
But, that's not true. That, that is not true. We've all stated here at this meeting and prior meetings all the way back to April that it was premature until we had another exit for those residents in West Fargo. We've all stated that numerous times. I, I would really like to see a little bit more collaboration between the city and the fire department. Because I do feel like it, it has just been demanding, demanding, demanding and just very pointed and threatening. It, it just has not been. I want to work on our relationship. I think we absolutely need to do that. So, I'm willing to leave this gate up until we have a solution with another road. That's, that's me.
And I, I'm, I'm going to step in there real quick. Naomi, I don't disagree with you, but I, I am prepared to put two rolls of slack. He comes from Williston Road, photo where he had to be pretty pointed in his discussions to get across what he needed to. And I understand how difficult that is because I have worked with city rules since before. And arguing is a little different, but he does have obligation to enforce code. And I know there's a way that we can probably resolve this. But I, I am going to give him a little bit of slack being new in this position and I hope that all of us can take a step back and understand that they're here in the help, well, working group. I think we have an opportunity to come to some revolution in a fairly short manner and prioritize it together.
Okay, any other comments?
Lucas, I'm going to bring back up our topic of photographic speed enforcement. Start working on it.
Oh, say that again?
Photographic speed enforcement.
All right, any other comments? Chris, anything else? Randy? So I think what I'm going to suggest we do, I'm agreeing with Naomi here, we need to have some more comments on this. I am not, again, I'm not really in favor of removing that gate until we have another solution in hand because there needs to be another avenue here because we cannot start sending traffic as it had been prior going into Greyhawk. I don't, I think there's a safety issue there. It's concerned me for a long time. It was proven like they said when that gate got taken down for a while, there was way too much traffic to that area to give anybody any warm fuzzies that this is going to be a long-term solution. It's not. So I think what we need to do is have another conversation. I want you guys to be participating with the city and have some more conversation on how we're going to solve this problem. I think too, the longer range thing here would be this Ninth Street. We get that in there, then I think we've got another option to keep talking about. It is on the books for this year. I'd like to see that get done. We have another exit out of, out of there for the residents in the Wilds. But for right now, I think that's what we want to do. So Brent, why don't you coordinate with Chris and Randy? Let's try and get some times together. Whoever else wants to get involved in this and let's try and pattern out something here that we can be palpable for both of us and keep the residents happy on this too.
Okay.
All right. Now, it's not the optimum solution, guys, but this is what we're going to have to do.
I'm fine going to the table, but I just don't want to be pushed out and drug out. I just want to come up with a solution.
But there's got to be a conversation. Again, don't put any restrictions on it. Just right now, we just need to sit down and have a conversation on the big picture and what we're going to do to solve the big picture so we can keep everybody on a straight and narrow here and make sure that the safety is paramount all the way around, not in just one direction, okay? That's what I want.
And constructing the road, Mr. Mahoney, that doesn't happen overnight.
I know.
So.
I'm just saying, as long as we can agree on a plan
Yeah.
in a timeframe.
Yes.
But that's where the conversations need to start taking place. Constructive conversations, alright? So, you guys set that up. When you guys want to participate in those conversations, that's fine too. All right? Anything else you guys want to talk about? All right, we'll get this set up then and we'll start making progress on it.
Thank you for showing up today.
Yep, appreciate you guys being here.
Thank you.
Question for Mr. Mahoney. Um, have you been placed to, or not placed to, but fired to?
Uh, I started here at the end of August. And I'm not done. It's almost twenty years and so. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the next thing we have.
Are you going to open it up for comment?
No. We don't have a comment for you tonight, guys. We're in, set up that way. I just wanted to have a conversation with those guys. You guys could all hear how this conversation is going to go and what we're planning to do.
I have something that may be a solution.
But I don't want to be here all night. Okay, go ahead.
I would recommend.
I know, I.
It's, just have him give it to Brent, others.
I can catch up with Jim.
Yeah.
Yeah. Everybody's got a solution that they'd like to send, why don't you email them to Brenton or one of the council members, that's fine. And we can review it as well. But again, the conversation needs to get started so we know what we can do with the fire department on this one. You guys heard what the conversation was tonight, so that's what we're going to go with this, okay?
Also, look at history because that neighborhood's been there twenty-five years. That road never existed for the first twenty and we never had problems. Just because an ambulance went the wrong way, which is the slower way, that probably cost more time than them sitting at that gate. If they had have come down Cheyenne the way they supposed to, the way they did for the last twenty-five years, they would have been waiting behind the gate and they would have been faster than going through a neighborhood of twenty-five miles an hour.
I understand. Listen, trust me, I've gotten all the emails. I've gotten all the phone calls. I get it. But like I said, we've got to come to an arrangement with the fire department on this one. So, I get it. Let's get started with it, okay?
But please do send
Yeah.
the city any suggestions that you guys have so we can
Yeah.
try to rectify the situation.
We can use that as a way to get started with this.
And I do, I do appreciate everyone that attended
Yes.
Yeah.
um, tonight, very much so.
Thank you.
All right, so. We've got the next one. Let's kick it out. Brent, you want to start it?
Stay here. We got a second to put that in the clear out. Okay. You ready?
Go.
Okay. Uh, the next item here is regards to the new home tax abatement, we have an extension request. About a week and a half ago, Jason and I were talking with Naomi, Councilwoman Berkland, about uh, new home tax abatement and had a good conversation about it and part of that dialogue came up that the new home tax abatement go, currently goes until June thirtieth of this year. Uh, the council extended that, uh, later part of last, or towards the middle of last year. The intentions were to be able to have it to where it comes back to council and this council would hash it through in July. Well, in July, the first meeting in July is when new council takes over. So the concern we had in the conversation was, is that best on the new council right away? Or do you give them time to get their feet on the ground? Uh, in that discussion, it was, it was talked about, should we propose to have a conversation and have, put, propose extending the tax abatement till the end of the year? And then having the conversation have a hard date for discussion. Uh, staff's recommendation was to say October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. The reasoning behind that date, we get through our budget, which would be done before that. Uh, we also, the council has time to get their feet on the ground, get familiar with being council because we will have some changes, changes on council because Mayor Peterson has indicated he's not going to rerun again. So you're going to have one change right there. But they get their feet on the ground, October twenty-first comes around. We have a conversation. We should have some more data about how new home construction is for the year twenty twenty-four. And it would be before the end of the year so that we give folks a clear direction of where to say is going to go with that abatement into twenty twenty-five. Is it to be renewed or is it not? And we should be able to give a clear direction before the end of the year by doing that. So we asked to bring it up for conversation to the council. A reminder that new home tax abatement is for the first hundred fifty thousand true and full assessed value. It isn't the full amount of the property. The average house is right around that, like, three fifty range, for example. For a new home, it'd be just under half of the value the first two years. Uh, but so they do, folks do pay property taxes, but it'd be a two-year abatement there, or exemption, yeah, abatement. Um, also a reminder for that new home tax abatement is for new homes, single-family homes that are occupied by the owner. And so if a builder builds one and it's rented out, that doesn't count. So, uh, but anyways, Naomi, did I miss anything from the conversation? I tried to do really quick highlights.
In my original thinking, like, maybe it would be, so I was thinking, well, maybe it'd be better if the original council took care of it before the election. But then however, I started thinking that it might get kind of messy with things happening in the middle of the year. Um, I worry that the resident, like, let's say it did change. And it did go away. Would the residents, I just don't want to have any residents calling the city saying, oh, I thought I was getting this abatement and there's just all this confusion right in the middle of a building season. So I just didn't know if you guys wanted to, to, to look at it in the middle of the year or if you wanted it to be an end-of-year process. I'm fine either way, really. I just was thinking it'd be easier for new coming residents so that they weren't confused on what they're getting. Do I get it or not? Maybe, I don't know how it looks on a staff level, trying to keep track of who's getting what.
So, Mr. Mayor, just you and the, the resolution that you guys adopted, it's pretty specific on who's getting it or not in the conditions of it.
Okay.
It's limited to a permit for the construction of single-family dwelling, condominium or townhouse residential unit. Uh, if they were issued a building permit between January one, twenty twenty-three and June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
inclusive.
Oh, okay.
It is, but, but to your point too, it's like, well then, it's like after that, then what happens when you're, when you're looking at it in July?
You have a gap of uncertainty.
There's a gap.
In the month of July.
Yep. And it would be the very first meeting of a new council.
So that means with the gap that it just expires or?
Expires and.
It just expires on its own.
That says it's only effective till June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, so we're in that situation again. So I just wanted to bring it to awareness because I.
From the staff perspective, if you were to extend it, I'd recommend we go with the October twenty-first. If you want to have a different date, we could. It just made sense from the staff of where you got through budget and it still was about a two-month window, two-and-a-half month window before the end of the year.
I mean, for clarity, then you don't just want to have it go to the end of the year, but have that conversation.
Abatement end of the year, but that discussion would be,
There's no confusion on that.
The discussion would be occurring before the expiration would be.
That's right. You start in October, have the discussions and then make a determination.
So we don't run into that same situation again where it lapses and then we have a gap.
I would prefer not to have it lapse again. Like, I feel like that needs to be a council decision and not just lapsing again.
Agreed. We need to stop the lapsing.
So you guys want to do it in October or you want to do it, like, have a, have a new council?
I don't have much of an opinion on it really. I'm fine moving it to October twenty-first for the reasons Naomi mentioned. I don't want there to be confusion for homeowners.
Yeah, and then, but have the extension for the bait to go to the end of the year, but have that conversation start in October, whether you want to continue with twenty twenty-five or not. Be what I would suggest. So that there's no confusion. It goes to the end of the year then. But you guys can start having, whoever's here can have that discussion starting in October.
I'm fine with that.
Yep, I'm fine with it too.
I just worry that if it lapses, it could cause more of an uproar like it did the last time.
Right, that's what you're suggesting, push it to.
Yeah.
And, you know. But you got, you guys, this year will have that discussion starting in October and then you make the judgment call.
Yeah, on October twenty-first, by having it at that date, you're not, hopefully you're not feeling forced like you have to have a decision made. You know, we'd obviously prefer a decision be made in one meeting, but you don't have to. If you need other information, we have time to gather, whatever. So that's why that date was important too.
All right, you guys want to go?
I, I mean, I, I would say we move it then because I don't want to deal with another lapse.
Do you want me to draft a resolution for approval at the next meeting or do you want to just do it now?
Can we just do it?
You can do it now. Very simple. I mean, we just extend the abatement to the end of the year. And we have it written in there that the council will address this again on. And we have it written in there that the council will address this again on October twenty-first, on how to proceed for build year twenty twenty-five. And then this, this abatement would begin midnight on December thirty-one.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Somebody want to make that motion then?
Sure.
Okay. Naomi makes the motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Alright, hold your favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Motion carried. Alright, next one, river traffic concerns. Who wants that one first?
I can bring it up here. So a couple of residents along Lost River, Meadowlark Park, reached out to the city about stop control on Lost River Road due to speed and safety. We did, it's currently a three-legged intersection with the primary road being Wild Ro- or Lost River Road and the secondary road being Wild Rose Way. Uh, we consulted the manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, also known as MUTD. And the guidance from that is basically, um, we'll bring it up here, is that the least restrictive method of control is what is the preferred method. Um, but they do have cases in there for three-legged intersections, and the stop control would be on the secondary leg of the intersection. So that's currently what's out there.
Jim, I'm not following.
Okay.
I'm really sorry. So the three-legged, two-legged, what?
Do you want me to touch base in backstory really quick?
Can you, can you maybe put the map up?
Yep. Yep. So he's pointing out that, I'll just touch base in the backstory there, is.
I have to get the visual here.
I'm sorry, you guys.
So, so we've had two different residents over the last approximately six, seven months reach out, uh, to council about, concerns about traffic by Meadowlark Park off of Lost River Road. And sometimes people like to take their road a little fast. Um, and the concerns were really stemming around trying to have a stop sign at, uh, Wild Rose Way and Lost River Road. So Jim, Jim will touch base about the engineering side of it, and why there isn't one there, and the logic behind that. We've looked at different options, or what could be done, what really shouldn't be done. I mean, everything from, is it appropriate for a stop sign, speed bumps or speed tables, and different things like that. I mean, even I got educated on proper placement of speed tables. Um, so he'll touch base about that, and answer any questions you guys have about those concerns there from the engineering side. So he, he was asked to just give a run-through of this. This was actually an item that, uh, also when Jason and I were talking with Councilor Berklin, she asked if we could bring this up. And I know I discussed on one of the previous emails about this, uh, Councilor White was talking about that too, but we were trying not to have this crammed in on a really busy agenda. But either way, we have it here tonight, and Jim will give an overview of the engineering side of it, and why it is how it is. So, does that help? Hopefully.
Just to start where I left off.
I'm so sorry, Jim.
It's alright. So, let me drive for a second.
Go for it.
Okay. So this intersection in question.
Yes.
Lost River Road, Wild Rose Way, Meadowlark Park. So typically, whenever we're asked to identify or evaluate anything, we always look at the existing conditions. That's where we start. So the existing conditions are, Lost River Road is classified as a residential collector in the complex, which means it has a higher functional class than a local street, which also means it's a primary street in the intersection. So when I say it's three-legged, it's got one leg coming in here, one leg coming out there, then the one coming in, which is Wild Rose Way.
Okay.
The way that MUTCD refers to this is the secondary road. So the secondary road is typically what gets signed first. There's two things going against, so Lost River Road is a collector, higher up than a residential street on the functional classification. This is the third leg of a three-legged intersection. So it's got two cases for a stop sign on Wild Rose Way.
Okay.
So being that this is a residential collector, the only stop signs are here at, I can't remember what street this is, and all the way back up in Wall Avenue. So there is a relatively long run in here, and that's by design, because collector streets typically don't have a lot of stopping and starting on them. So, concern with safety when Meadowlark Park is being utilized, which is a limited amount of the day. And it's also concerned with, with speed. There's been some single-vehicle accidents along here. As you can see, there's lots of curves, and it's kind of sharp here. So, when you look at stop signs, MUTCD recommends stop signs be placed for speed control, right here. Stop, you have a stop sign, she'll not be, speed control, she'll not be used for speed control. So that's one thing we have to look at. Speed bumps, speed humps, anything along that nature is typically not done on a curvy road, just because of the alignment. You get out of whack, you're not crossing them perpendicular, and then it becomes like a four, you have to cross the bump four times. So, is there a place along here where there could be a speed bump or a speed hump, possibly? But naturally, curves tend to kind of slow people down, although I've been told that this doesn't really work out here, that there's a lot of traffic. At certain turns of people going through and, and driving, exceeding the speed limit. So it's twenty-five mile an hour, there's no reduction for the park. We looked at the potential of signing this for a park, or signing it as a, you know, people playing or something along that lines. Or reducing the speed limit along this whole thing. But if you reduce the speed limit to fifteen, it's doubtful anybody's going to go fifteen miles an hour without some enforcement, so. Um, the other thing that this road has going against is just a low-volume road. I mean, there are times where there are plenty of cars driving on it, but for the majority of the time, it just doesn't have the volume of cars. That's a seventeen Cheyenne, Wall Avenue, any one of those. So, from a, is it signed correctly? The manuals and the guidance says yes. But there's also caveat for low-volume, low-traffic roads, if there's a bunch of crash data. There's not a lot of crash data on this one, but it's been a couple of single-vehicle, probably speed-related. So, being that it is low-speed, low-volume, it's kind of a judgment call. So you have the ability to do something there if you'd like, but you don't have to do that.
Are the residents who emailed me here, oh, okay. Good. Um, so what can we do? We can put a stop sign, or you're saying no?
If you choo- if you want to, you certainly can, but what I'm saying is the intersection as it sits right now is proper.
As it sits right now, it's proper?
It's, it is signed according to the manual.
Are, are our hands completely tied to the manual? No, okay.
There's judgment in all of it.
Right, okay, good.
But I have to recite something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's what I have to cite, and that's what I have to review.
But that's where we start with.
This is where we start, yep.
And did the memo say that there is a stop sign as Wild Rose Way?
Yep.
There is one there. There is one there, okay, okay.
Wild Rose Way, the, the third leg, there is a stop sign.
Right here.
Yeah, but there's also a second stop sign just above it on Firefly, so the cars are going very slowly there anyway.
Sure.
That is an area of concern.
So it's really the Lost River Road?
It's, that's it, yeah.
Oh, I'm in the wrong spot. Yeah, here's the stop, yeah, I'm in the wrong spot. Here we go. Yes.
What would your.
And the bigger concern isn't necessarily traffic crashes. For us, it's more pedestrian, because I've seen several times with children at the park, when all the parking spots along Lost River Road for the baseball fields and the, they're all taken up there. There's zero visibility for the cars to the park, the park to the cars, and children running toward Lost River Road, and parents screaming after their children, stop, stop, stop. And it is low-volume, but when there are baseball games going on, that changes drastically. I mean, there, there are a lot of people there, um, so it's not always about the cars. For me, the concern when I emailed in was more about the children.
Okay, and then like at Wild Rose Way and Lost River, that's where the playground is, and that's like a crossing area. And that's where the stop sign would be useful, because there's kids that just rest there by themselves. It would be helpful to have a safer crossing spot.
Okay.
And then I'm the one that emailed about the car accident. We've had, um, one car accident recently where somebody ended up on our doorstep who had blown out of their, um, ball cart, and had to be taken to the ER, because that curve down on the south end of Lost River is pretty tight. Um, and we've also had cars drive up onto our, like, boulevard, our grass area between the road and the sidewalk. So I won't let my kids play in the front yard, because I'm worried about cars accidentally coming up onto the grass. Okay, that's what I had to email about.
People seem to get going fast on that, on that straight stretch, just not in the baseball field. Right up in the park, they seem to pick up speed, they get to that main, trying to go to nowhere. And that's what she's saying, that people end up going up on the boulevard, because they just pick up speed on a little bit of straightaway there.
My address from home, is there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, right, you know, just north of that turn right there, people pick up speed on that straightaway. I live right along that straightaway too, and I see people driving way here too fast there, they slam on the brakes, and they hit that corner.
So, would we put something on this side or that side of the intersection?
I think the bigger concern is between Wild Rose and whatever that other one or south one is, I can't remember what it is, around the park.
Because you got Lost River Road all the way out to the, up to wall there.
Going this way.
Yeah.
Do you have thoughts, Jim?
Do I have thoughts?
Well, doesn't really.
That's a open question.
With regard to what we're discussing.
We've, we've got a secondary concern that's going to come with this too, because this summer, we're going to have road construction out on Wall that's going to just allow one entrance into Lost River, and that's going to be the road. The traffic is going to probably quadruple on that road over the summer.
On this one?
On the river road that.
All the traffic will be.
All the traffic's going to have to come.
We funnel that or Lost River Road via either Firefly.
Firefly will take some too.
Firefly or.
But it's, the, the majority is probably not going to turn, they're just going to stay straight on that road unless there's a reason to, so.
Right.
Also, I mean, are you in favor of trying to alleviate some of this?
We're going to have to do something. The, the thing is, it's the what?
What.
So, bring it up again, do you, Lucas, what's the possibility of getting speed enforced by a camera, getting a picture? Is it possible in North Dakota?
The, the statute is silent to it, so I'll draft you a memo on it. There's no statute on it in North Dakota, so I can't give you an answer without having more background into it. So I will draft a memo on the legality of speed enforcement cameras in North Dakota.
I mean, short of having officers sit there, I mean, I don't know what else we can do.
They're not used, which kind of tells me that they're not legal in North Dakota, but that could just be that nobody wants to use them. And I know that some states and cities are using them more, some that have used them are getting rid of them. So I, I'll just have to look into the, it's a constitutional question.
What about a traffic calming table?
Gets back to the geometry.
I mean, is there, is there a section of the road that it would maybe make sense? I mean, I, I see what you're saying about how people would approach.
You don't hit it perpendicular, so, um.
So if you hit it the wrong way, you could lose that whole.
Instead of going over a bump, it.
They shouldn't be driving that fast anyway when they approach it, so.
But you could also be looking at even situations like, you know, we were talking earlier about like ice storm or things like that, where that's a different condition that make you.
You could slide.
Throw all whack a little bit there. You know, one idea we talked at staff level is, do you have like children at play signs, or, uh, speed, you know, reduce the speed, speed limit? However, even reducing the speed limit, you're going to have, it's, it's down to enforcement to, do people follow it? I think on like Wall Avenue, when we had the fifteen mile an hour speed limits, we still have a fifteen mile an hour speed limit sign. We haven't changed those over yet where it's paved. But, uh, you had some cooperation and compliance on it, and others didn't. So you'd probably have the same thing if you reduce the speed limit, for example, you're still running at people speeding, it's just, you'll have some comply and some won't, so.
So Jim, let me ask you this, you and I talked about this afternoon, this whole thing about the traffic patterns you're going to change here over the summer. I'm almost thinking we should spend a little bit more time on this, so not that I'd click the, elongate this, but I want to spend a little bit more time thinking about where the strategic points would be if we were going to put in some type of a traffic control system. What's strategic? Like you said, I don't want perpendi- you know, odd things perpendicular on a curve and stuff like that. But if there's some way that we might be able to turn like a, um, speed bump, if you will, into maybe a crosswalk area.
That's what I was thinking.
You know, we, we could actually put something like that over there by the park. It serves two-fold, then one way to slow people down, but also gives a place where it's known for be able to cross from the park to the south side. I don't know, I'm just.
Potentially a speed, like a table or a hump here?
Or, or a little further back.
A painted crosswalk, probably.
Crosswalk, so maybe a little. Maybe about, uh, yeah, somewhere in the middle there.
Problem with here is that it's.
Not there. Up a little bit.
Go up a little, about midway between where you were.
Warminos.
Yeah, somewhere in there.
You, so, any type of, any type of mid-block crossing is frowned upon with pedestrians. You want them to cross at intersections.
Oh.
So mid-block crossings are typically frowned upon.
Okay, so where could we put it then? Like, right by the road, by Rose Way?
Well, this would be one spot. I mean, it's already a, it's already a, an intersection.
Right, so that, I mean, that would be the.
Raise that up, I suppose, make it into a little bit of a table.
It's not, it's not a turn. You're just saying not to have a turn at all.
This is different than this, than this. This is perpendicular.
What do we think, what do we think about, uh, reducing the speed there by the park? Slow children at play. I, I agree with the speed table. I think that in this location, it makes sense, and I have heard the residents' concerns. How about we slow that whole curve down on top of that?
The thing is, you know how well people read signs, Sarah.
I don't.
That's, I mean, the signage isn't really going to do it. There's going to have to be some type of enforcement that goes along with this, some type of a, I don't know, again, it's probably some traffic control, speed bump type of thing. But I think, like, I'd like Jim to kind of maybe do some more strategy, thinking on where those would be best placed, based upon residents' input. Uh, and then also, we, we know it's coming this summer. There might have to be some extra temporary ones down for the summer to try and get things under control. Because I think, I live out there too, I live on Lost River Road, I've seen all the traffic. Uh, and I know it's going to get more so this summer, especially the construction traffic. I don't mean to pick on those guys, but they don't know anything about speed control. So, um, that's why we're going to have to do something. It's just the amount and where. But I think, I'd rather, Jim, I'd rather you take a little bit of time and maybe ponder that, and we could have a repeat discussion about this at our next meeting. Give some recommendations on what we can do without overdoing it, but let's see what we can do.
Yeah, so, the IT, International Transportation Engineers, I think they're association. You talk speed humps, they're not, they're appropriate for residential streets, but not typically used on major roads, bus routes, or primary emergency response routes, which is kind of this one. So we'd have to be looking at like a speed table or a raised crosswalk. So, I mean, if that's, if that's the avenue you want to go, we can definitely pursue that.
Give us some options. That's what I'm kind of looking for, see, we, you know, again, knowing what we, what we're dealing with as far as that road, and it being more, there's going to be more traffic on that one. What is your engineering skills tell us we should do? How's that?
I mean, I don't want to let it go too long though, Jim. We gotta, I want to have a solution for the residents that are here.
Yep. Typically, don't put speed bumps, even when there's snow on the forecast.
I know, but I want them to know, like, that we're, you know, working on it. So can we have the information by the next meeting?
I will work on it.
Okay. Are you guys okay with that? Yeah.
Alright.
We'll come up with a plan.
Okay. Anything else, guys?
Thank you for coming and providing your input.
Thank you.
Good. Alright, Jay, you got the next one?
The reason we're all here.
Oh, yes, of course it is.
Alright. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, what we have for you tonight is the first reading of the land use ordinance. First, we'll start with a little bit of background. I think some of you have heard this before, but we'll just go through this with the public hearing portion. Uh, the city recruit, uh, released a request for proposals back in October of twenty twenty. A total of six firms responded to that RFP. Uh, from that, Gippels Webster was selected as the city's consultant back in March of twenty twenty-one. Uh, an outreach survey was conducted between April and May of twenty twenty-one with a project website being established. An outreach survey was conducted between April and May of twenty twenty-one with a project website being established, and a public house, open house was open, or was held December ninth of twenty twenty-one. Most recently, public comm, or public comment period was, uh, held on the draft ordinance from April twenty twenty-three to May twenty twenty-three for the current draft, um, that we've been looking at. Uh, as stated previously with the public comment period, uh, overall eight responses were received during this period, and a series of changes have occurred as a result of comments received from that and additional staff review. And within the pack you guys received, there's a large spreadsheet, uh, that breaks out each of those changes and what was changed and what wasn't. Uh, so just a quick thing of why, why the update, why it was needed, the main reason was implementation of Horace twenty forty-five, the comprehensive plan. Uh, then it looks to regulate development based on updated case law and current planning practices. Uh, and then additionally, this does make the code more user-friendly. Uh, major changes that we've been looking at, size is a notable difference from a hundred and fifty-six pages to approximately three hundred and eighty-two. Uh, we had a zoning district reconfiguration with updated standards. Uh, we added additional processes, expands some middle requirements for Platts, and expands and defines approval criteria for different applications that we have. Uh, site and building design standards, updated parking, lighting and building standards, uh, introducing transition and buffer requirements, as well as introduces complete street design standards. Uh, and then visual and interactivity, this goes back to the, the user friendliness of this hyperlinks and interactive table of contents, summarized standards at the beginning of the, the, or the ordinance, and visuals for height, width and area measurements, street placement, zoning standards, et cetera. Uh, on December twelfth, we brought this to the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, and held a public hearing to receive testimony and provide a recommendation to the city council. The Planning and Zoning Commission ultimately voted five oh to recommend approval of the land use ordinance with the following changes. So the first is to add the language to eight feet to each category of minimum requirement within the table four dash five point three point B point one point B. On page five dash three-three, uh, for barrier to screen residential zoning district, the categories will now read, uh, if the proposal is accepted or the request is, or change is accepted, to six foot to eight foot high decorative wall as provided in subsection I below or berm, and the table, uh, is off to the right for your references there. Uh, the commission also looked to recommend to add language for airstrips, uh, within the land use table, within agricultural zoning district as a conditional use permit, uh, and to provide appropriate definitions to the definition section. The next one was a recommendation to increase the minimum lot width from forty feet to forty-five feet, and increase interior side yard setbacks from five feet to seven feet within the compact residential zoning district. Change parcel number one five zero one eight zero one zero zero five zero five zero to agricultural, which is currently zoned seventeen seventy-six, is highlighted in yellow. Uh, I would note that the changing of the district would revert it back to egg as it currently is, but the comprehensive plan still designates the property as a community focus. Uh, and this parcel would be included within that seventeen seventy-six small area plan in the event that someone were to come forward and, and apply for a rezon for that, so that would be an applicable zoning for a future, future development. Uh, then look to remove the maximum front yard and street side yard setbacks from the commercial zoning district. And that was as a result of some conversation, and I'll pull, we'll talk about it here shortly. But there was some concern with how Lakeview Heights in that area has developed. Uh, within the seventeen seventy-six, there's a maximum front yard setback, and with some proposed uses in that rather commercial development, that may pose as a problem. So rather than blowing up the entire seventeen seventy-six district, and the intent of that, the solution was to remove the front yard setback, um, and street side yard setback from commercial, and allow for a path forward through that alternative. And then lastly, add language to provide a procedure for removing existing trees within the development area, and define what type of tree and quantities of tree will be required to be planted in its place, uh, if those trees were to be removed. Lucas Croker has been working on drafting some of that language, we're currently reviewing that. The goal is if that is accepted, we would have that prepared and ready for the time of the second reading, uh, for you guys to actually confirm how that is read. So that was the commission's recommendation. Since that meeting, um, a few additional considerations or discussion items, uh, have come up. The first is, I kinda alluded that to, the pace of Lakeview Heights and that development has far outpaced the, the development of this ordinance. And for a cleaner kind of transition for commercial development happening in that area, uh, suggestion would be to switch the zoning district classification of the southeast corner of County Road seventeen and seventy-six Avenue from seventeen seventy-six to commercial, and again, that's due to the development speed, uh, within Lakeview Heights. Uh, add language, oh, sorry, and then the next additional consideration, and I'll leave this page up so for discussion purposes, um, would be because of the switch from forty to forty-five feet and five feet to seven feet in terms of the side yard setback, we have a lot of lots that are either already approved or in the process to be approved. And rather than going through a thousand different variance applications for one, this ordinance will be adopted. Talking with the attorneys, it'd be a lot easier to put a blurb or a section within our non-conforming, uh, chapter that is basically a grandfather clause, whether it's grandfathering everything that is currently or proposed to be co, zoned compact residential or was current or formerly R six. From already platted to in the process, uh, subject to the original set pieces of that former R six district, the five-foot side yard and the fifteen-foot street side yard. We could look at it as getting specific in terms of like a lot range, lots ranging under X amount of feet would be required to be under that old standard. That gets to be a little bit of a administrative nightmare, um, trying to pick and choose, and if we went that route, I would encourage a range of that, just to encourage a differentiate, or different types of product, other than just a two-stall, or two-stall garage that could fit on those. At least allow some flexibility in those existing developments. We recently have discussed some concerns of, of the street side yard setback within the compact residential district. Uh, currently lists as at twenty feet. And something we could talk about too is a reduction from twenty feet to fifteen feet, which is like our current standard now for the street side yard, not our interior side yard. And then lastly, regarding around airstrips, I had Lucas look through some surrounding municipalities ordinances just to try and pre-draft some of this stuff, so if this was approved, we could get it to the consultant, and our second reading could happen much quicker. What Lucas found, and I'll, I'll, Lucas fill in any blanks that I missed on here, is a lot of the cities that surround us have language for municipal or, or municipal airstrips, not a lot of private airstrip stuff that's going on there. And with the municipal airstrip comes the establishment of an airport authority, and so I want that to be kinda part of the discussion as of all tonight, is if the city council is interested in entertaining private airstrips or in retaining municipal airstrips for that matter as well. I think that's all I have for now, I'll stand for any questions, and remind us this is a public hearing, so if there are people here to testify.
Okay.
Then I suppose I should open up for a public hearing. Lucas, I got you there.
Appreciate that.
The, uh, the draft you put out in our packet for tonight appeared to be similar to the draft that you had me, or you printed out for me to read through?
Yep.
No changes had been made?
No changes have been made, the, the only things I have waiting in the queue are those six items I read that from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Depending on if you guys accept those as part of your approval, then I would forward those on to Giffords Webster to correct before we brought this back for the second reading. But no changes have been made since-
So, there was the changes I, or at least the, how do you call it, differences from the tables at the front versus the actual, the actual information found deeper into the chapters, did you ever correct that? Height, sidewall height?
I have it listed on the, the larger, uh, Excel spreadsheet, I think, so I, I will double confirm that, that there's a discrepancy.
Cause yeah, that, it still exists in the packet you put online. Um, I did wanna talk about, like I said, your scope that you have left in here for the last however long now. I still have a hard time with, uh, some of the verbiage in there. As far as, you know, it, it's, states in here that you can't maintain, um, a building that would be out of conformity, that's, that's the problem I guess I have with it. Verbiage specifically being no building or structure or part thereof shall be erected, constructed, altered or maintained, and no new use or change shall be made or maintained of any building, structure or land or part thereof. No subdivision of the land shall take place, except in conformity with the provisions of this code. I have a problem with the word maintains in there. We discussed that.
So, yeah, and I, we discussed, we would prob that as brought up as part of the conversation, so thank you for bringing that up.
Yep.
Like we discussed, I don't believe the, the intent is to drown a, a property by any means, but it is language, you know, in there to certify that this is now the, the rule of the land, that property is that we're out of conformity. Like if someone painting their house, I believe it was the example we talked about,
Yep.
doesn't need to then, they can't paint their house because their house might not be conforming, it's more related to site redevelopment, or if, if a permit is required through that, and part of that was how do we then emphasize that?
How do we change the verbiage to state?
I don't know, Lucas, if there-
Well, so there's gonna be another section on non-conforming uses, and the stuff that you're referring to would fall under that, where it allows it. Allows maintenance of it, but then it'll say you can't expand the use over a certain percentage or something. So it's trying to read the sections together, I'm assuming that Horace's existing land use code has a section just like that.
Yeah.
That reads the exact same way.
Yeah.
And that's just to say, like Jace said, just to make sure that everything's covered in the city, to make sure that it applies to all property, but then we have to look at to what the non-conforming section says to allow the maintenance that you're referring to.
Yeah.
I don't know what that says. I haven't memorized the ordinance yet. I almost had the last, I almost had the last land use code down.
And I didn't get through all of them for the first time, in case Jim was wondering.
Okay, any comments?
Jace, when you mentioned that you were removing front yard and side street max setbacks for commercial zoning district, was that just in the seventeen seventy-six district or in all commercial?
So commercial will be a standalone district by itself, so it is there, like our, uh, we have C one, C two, C three, those are all being consolidated into just commercial.
And then they would all comprise then this, this removal?
Correct, seventeen seventy-six is not technically, uh, it, there's commercial components to it, but it's not a commercial district. It would be in solely the district titled in air quotes, "commercial." And that would, so that would be subject to all, like, I guess we can use a prime example on this map, you can see there's these red spots up here, those are commercial zoning. Those would have that front yard maximum setback removed. The seventeen seventy-six would maintain as it was with the front yard maximum setback and side yard.
Okay, all right, that's kinda what I was, was wondering, thank you.
So, Councilmember Chirrell, I guess, here's what the, the city's existing one says. No structure, land and building shall be hereafter used, and no structure or part thereof shall be hereafter located, erected, moved, reconstructed, extended, enlarged, converted or structurally altered without a zoning permit, and shall be in compliance with this ordinance.
Right.
So they do not use maintenance in that one.
Does, it does not have maintenance?
Does not.
Okay, that's kind of my point.
So you read this ordinance before?
I'm just testing. You gotta give me a little credit sometime, all right?
Why didn't you just say you read it?
No. I'll let you read it, it's your job.
My job's just to find the answer.
You're making Jack blush over here.
Making you blush.
So Lucas, is there any concern if we remove the word?
Attorney Trudeau over there says get rid of it. We'll, we'll look at it, we'll, we'll see what it says with, uh, modification.
Okay.
Because I'm also concerned that it's like construct instead of reconstructed. You know, this is talking about expanding all those things, this is like new, so, let me look at it.
Okay. Do you want my copy of the highlighting?
Just kidding. I'll take your notes, your work product.
Man, it's rough in here today.
Anybody else have anything on this one?
No, I was at the, um, meeting with the Planning and Zoning, um, commissioners, and I thought it went really well. They had a really good conversation, right, Ron, you guys, you guys did really well, um, kinda talking. Um, I, I like their recommendations, um, so I, I have no issue with any of it.
Anybody in the public have any comment they wanna make on any of this? Okay. Chris, introduce yourself for everybody.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, I am, uh, Chris Mack, uh, with, uh, Christensen Companies. As far as the code, I mean, really good job on, uh, working with us, working with other developers, other, um, other builders, realtors, on getting, uh, the code to where it is, uh, today, uh, it's a big undertaking. And also, um, thanks to Jace and the Planning Commission, uh, working with our concerns with, I'm the one who actually brought up, uh, the tree preservation plan, what do we do with the existing grove of trees? They're working on some different options and how we can replace trees or do cash-in-lu options, um, as Lucas is working on. But, uh, I guess my main concern for tonight is, uh, the, the corner setbacks, and they sent a, uh, or the street side setbacks and the interior side setbacks. Originally, um, we had, uh, five foot, that's what is a current in, uh, interior side setback. Um, and then in the last meeting, um, seven foot setbacks, um, were suggested, and I don't know where that came from exactly. Um, and then also fifteen feet is the current street side setback, um, and then they're getting extended. And I guess my concern on that is, if you look at the examples, um, it's really gonna limit, um, the styles of homes, and I know, and, and I do agree with the forty-five foot, um, minimum and the forty-eight foot average. But this example is showing how small of a buildable footprint you do get with these additional setbacks. Now you can go bigger, but then, go just bigger lots in general, but then, um, you're driving up the cost, and it's not as entry level, um, of a subdivision. And then if you go to the next, um, slide, um, here you can go all, most of the lots. Um, and I did some different variations on some angles, and, um, you could pretty much do a three-stall, uh, home on all the lots, if we could just, uh, put the current setbacks the way they are. And then I did some research on the fire code, um, five foot is kind of, or fire, five foot is, um, what the, uh, that's an X J's. So, five foot is what the requirement is on, on a primary structure, um, for fire safety. And then I pulled up different communities in the state of North Dakota, most of them were five foot for an interior and twelve foot for, um, street side. I did find a couple where it was seventeen, um, and six, but nothing seven and, and twenty, so. Just wanted to, that you guys know some of the, uh, concerns we have, and, um, talked to other builders too, they had some concerns on it too.
Who was that?
So, talked with several, uh, and I don't wanna say names, but, and some of them are here, so builders and, uh, also, uh, agents, um, realtors, stuff like that.
Jace, just out of curiosity, what was the change from what seems to be a normal? When you were talking about, just curious why we went through?
So I met with Councilmember Brooklyn and Councilwoman Landstrom, uh, to go over some of their concerns with the ordinance, and, and we had a really good conversation about, um, doing something unique and looking at some lots that'll look differently. On how they, how they function, whether, you know, the, just the straight-up appearance of them based on a wider setback. And that was kind of the, the catalyst where I did, I brought it up to the Planning and Zoning Commission just to have forward a recommendation to you guys, so they had a chance to vet that as a move as well. Um, and the Planning and Zoning Commission was unanimous about- And the Planning and Zoning Commission was unanimous about wanting to do that as well. But it all kind of spurred, it's just part of the conversation and talking with the council members is part of their concern, I know Councilmember Trudeau and Councilmember White have brought up concerns of the setback issue as well, on how close they are throughout some of the meetings that we've had, and I just, I wanted to get it in front of the commission to make that recommendation for you, so at least the council has a full idea of where that's coming from on that.
Okay, that's how I figure it would be, so let's explain why this has changed a little bit, so.
And we had, we had good conversation and collaboration with, with the planning and zoning, we had a workshop and we had lots of discussion about it, but I guess one thing I would just, I would want to mention, and I, and I'm happy with Planning and Zoning's five oh decision, and I'm gonna support it, but it's funny you bring up the tree, the Tree Boulevard program, because in the initial language, that how it was drafted, with forty-foot front lots, we discussed that meeting and I brought up, it didn't even fit the definition of being wide enough to have a boulevard tree with the way it was, and there's other safety concerns, I see that you have mentioned that it maybe fits within the realm for safety, but, or for fire, but it was really close together, and also when you drive down there with lots like that, they don't even have anywhere to blow their snow, they're just blowing their snow onto the next person's driveway because they're, they're tight in there, so I'm, I'm very happy with the collaboration and a lot of work went in others with planning and zoning, and I'm happy with it.
Okay.
I guess I just speak a little bit, so, I know, since we've started doing development in Horace, the, the big concern that's always been brought up is trying to keep the street frontage looking different, and that was the point of going with the bigger lots and with the forty-eight foot average. And by doing this, so for example, we, we were doing, under the current code, we were doing forty-three to forty-five foot lots, that would give a thirty-three foot, thirty-three to thirty-five foot buildable area. Now, by implementing these new setbacks, and, and not everybody's going to go all the way, they're not gonna, not everybody wants a bigger home, they, it would just give more options, but going with these current setbacks, you take that forty-five foot lot, and now you have a thirty-one foot buildable footprint, so you're actually having a smaller home, which is okay, but they're all, there's not gonna be any option to do it like a two-and-a-half stall or a three-stall to help break up the look on a, on a street front, is the point. And as we do the developments, we do have our own covenants too, so I think the combination of the covenants that we currently are using and the, keeping the setbacks as is, you will get that different look that you want on, on the streets in the new development. And, and like I said, not everybody is gonna go from setback to setback, but at the five foot, they might go seven, they might go, just depending on what that builder and is working with their clients.
I mean, to me, I feel like there are some people that just do the bare minimum, because that's what the code is, and I think when we were talking about doing this, we really wanted to see a little bit more out of, like, there, there's a reason why we wanted to change it, and I think it's because, in my opinion, we wanted to have things, what's the word I'm looking for? Now, I don't want to have conformity, I really don't, but I'm not understanding when you're saying that you can't, it'll be a smaller print, wouldn't you just be able to revise your entire plat to make it work? I don't understand.
You can, but like I was saying, then we'd have to go with bigger lots then, the whole thing, which is, I mean, we can, but then we're trying to keep these prices for, and the lots in, in the compact residential at, at entry level.
So, so let, let's just be open and honest, how much is it gonna cost to have five-foot bigger lots? What, in, in price, ballpark, how many, is it, is it ten thousand dollars for an extra five feet? What is it? I mean, I, I think everybody.
I don't have that, I don't have the answer right now, I can look it up and I can get that information to you.
And I can kind of speak in generalities, so.
Sure.
My name's Brandon, I'm a real estate broker in the Florida area, so generally speaking, for a five-foot wide lot, if you're gonna call it ten thousand dollars more, there's also the special assessments that get tacked down to it from there. And so if you look at forty-five feet with seven feet setbacks, you have thirty-one left, whereas if it's forty with five, it's thirty, so you really gain ten thousand dollars and five in this example on that lot to gain one foot of buildable space, so from a storm rule standpoint, that makes sense, but overall, it's, in that example, ten thousand dollar net for a one-foot buildable, so it just drives the cost of a house up, and most of these houses that they're developing are not entry level, but you want a spread from a three thousand dollar house to four fifty in a neighborhood, and it's just gonna bring that floor up to where it's, it's just a little harder to hit.
Could you clarify, Chris, I guess, when we're, what we're talking about here, are you talking about your problems and restrictions in relation to this current plat or just in general? Or are, is this?
So, that's just an example plat, if you want to pull those two sheets up.
I mean, because you, you have other options of different lot sizes.
What I did here, I.
Can you pull that up a little, Al?
Yes, how much is I, we'll go a block at a time.
Thanks, that's better, thank you.
I kept the blocks identical, I didn't change anything on the blocks, and all I wanted to do is show the difference, so basically the red, you looked on the table, the red showed what kind of a home, it could be a two-stall, a two-and-a-half stall, and then the orange or your three-stall, small three, small three-stall, and you can just see what your buildable area is on, on those, and then, and then, and then this basically will meet the current code at the forty-eight, so I show that on the side too, at the forty-eight foot. So this would be a plat that could be accepted by Planning and Zoning, and this is, so what I'm showing is you're, you're limiting the different styles of homes you can put on that block, if you were to do that block, and then the next one, it's the exact same block with the reused setbacks, and you'll see that you can bump it up to the all three-stall garages, which will give.
So that's like with you doing like the bare minimum, like not wanting to like move at all to try to like?
We can move lots around in here too, but we can't go over than forty-five, so then, but then.
You can't, I'm sorry, what'd you say, you can't do, I'm sorry, I dismissed it, you can't, you could, you said you could move lots around, but?
Yeah, we can shift some, some footage around, and then you could have, you know, a few forty-nines, but then you have more forty-fives, and then.
Because, because you're working towards the percentage requirement?
Yeah, and even on the.
Building, because, yeah, I mean, I'm not trying to be, but you're billing to the minimum requirement then within the parameters if they were proposed.
No, I'm not, because, I mean, most of these lots in this example, I mean, it's, most of lots are a foot over of what the bare minimum of forty-five is.
Yeah.
And I can shift within there, but even on a forty, you need a forty, you need a four, a fifty-foot lot to do a thirty-six-foot wide buildable area.
And it seems what this is coming down to is, what kind of developments do you guys want to see in the city of Horace? If you, if you just want to see half-acre lot developments as a standalone option, that just doesn't appeal to the different types of folks that want to live in Horace, so you have some developers that do much bigger windy roads at a higher cost for nicer look, and some that do lots that kind of serve different people that want to live there, so if, if the city of Horace wants to have much bigger lots with less density, that's just a different conversation, so different developers hit different demographics, and so these lots hit a certain demographic that I think would love to live in Horace. And if it gets bumped to fifty feet as a minimum, it does, I, I believe it prices people up to that degree, so.
And we do have a, another more dense designation from this to U R.
Yeah, so this isn't like the bottom line, you guys would still be able to have your, um, compact density, right, Jase? This isn't the?
This, I mean, in terms of densest, density, this isn't the most dense one, we have urban residential that's included within the land use ordinance as well, it's not identified on the future land use map, or on the zoning map, but at a certain point, once we're done with this, we will have to do a small amendment to the comp plan to just upload the compatible zone, so it could be seen as a compatible zone to some certain areas, but the ones that I believe they are currently working in are the areas that are zoned compact residential.
Right.
Right.
So then it wouldn't really affect what you guys are?
Well, then we would have to do a zone change, correct? I guess I wasn't aware that there was another.
We did.
Yeah.
There's, there's one more up there, but it, the urban residential is a, a transitional, like a truly transitional piece, and that there's partially a reason why it's not on the zoning map, I mean, it is an applicable zone, but there's nowhere that it's accounted for on any parcel within the city at this point.
And so is the city planning on designating certain zones for that density, or it would just be on a case-by-case application?
We'll have to go through and amend the, the comp plan, there's a section within comp plan that takes the future land use maps and then apply, or the designations and applies it to applicable zoning districts, well, the applicable zoning districts that are in there are under the old ordinance, so we would have to reapply it, so I, I don't have an answer of where that would be applied at, but in some of these areas where you guys are looking at, it most likely wouldn't, it would be kind of that immediate transition most likely from an industrial or a high-intensity commercial use, rather than a transition from your more neighborhood area-type commercial into the single-family residential.
So that wouldn't be a type of zoning that you typically see throughout a typical residential development, why I think the developers are aware of it. Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, Nate Anderson, on behalf of Thompson Homes.
Hi.
Appreciate the opportunity here, I think, again, what I'm forgetting at is, if the goal is more diverse-looking neighborhoods, more diverse-type styles of housing, I think with the forty-five foot minimum lot size and seven-foot interior setbacks and the twenty-foot side yard, street setback, you're actually losing diversity in the housing in these neighborhoods, because the buildable area on each of those forty-five foot lots is, is actually less, or it's very similar to what's currently available with a forty-foot lot and a five-yard setback.
I know, but the problem is like, you drive into one of those neighborhoods, like, they can't even put their downspouts from their.
Yeah.
Rain gutters down, because they go into each other's yards, like it's.
Yeah, and so that's why, yeah, the forty-five foot is certainly something that I think that we can all get behind in what we're saying, but with the additional seven-foot setback requirements, you're gonna essentially force home buyers into bigger lots and less diverse housing products put on those lots, because you just can't fit, you can only build a house so wide, and so if you have wider lots with the similar setbacks to what they currently are, we can actually fit a lot more styles and homes on those lots, creating a really more diverse-looking neighborhood, we narrow the, the buildable area on each of those lots, now you're, you're limiting the types of homes that we can fit on those lots, so I, we're with you, the goal is.
I, I hate to like be this person, but I'm trying to understand if it's like truly an issue or just an issue because you want it to be the way you've always done it, like that's where I'm struggling right now, because like I'm, I am trying to hear what you're saying, but then I'm just hearing, well, we want to make more money and we want it to be this way, and I'm not saying that to be mean, because I really do want this to be beautiful, and the last thing I want is to corner ourselves, so like if somebody could please step in and tell me like, what, if they're saying something that is like accurately.
I, I, I just, I'm trying to be pretty quiet here to just see what, how the conversation goes, and from what I could see is, by doing seven-foot side yard setbacks, it still limits the diversity of houses, I do see that, however, from what I could tell, it actually gives you a foot more, not less, because you're going two feet for each side.
Yeah.
And you're five foot, so it's one foot, however, I do see the concerns or argument of if you're making bigger lots, it does make the lot prices a little bit more expensive, specials could be a little bit more, so I could see that, so that, that's the perspective I see, and I think Jase and I are kind of whispering here about that, so I could see the concern of cost, diversity of housing, things like that, you're probably, if you take the approach of just, yep, we're gonna try to just achieve the, the minimum requirements, then yeah, you're not gonna have much for diversity of houses. If you have your average lot width, your requirement there that helps encourage the diversity, but with bumping up the minimum lot size to forty-five, and then you have an average lot width of forty-eight, there's not much of a spread there, so I, that, that's what I'm seeing, I don't know if that helps the conversation or not, but.
It helps.
At least, like I said, from just trying to sit back and hear the different concerns.
Yeah, I, I guess it would seem like the forty-five foot lots would allow a much wider variation of houses, and so with both.
I'm sorry, say that again?
With the forty-five foot lots, it should allow for a much wider variation of houses, which seems to be the goal of a much different-looking development. But then I feel it goes right back to where it was previously with the seven-foot side yards, so then one foot doesn't change a house a ton in look, and so you're gonna go from options to have a two-stall, two-story, a three-stall two-story, or bi-levels or whatever, but then when you do the seven-foot setback, it goes right back to a garage and a door at thirty-one feet, so.
So I'm hearing you're okay with the forty-five, you guys are okay with the forty-five foot minimum?
Yeah, forty-five is in the province more of.
It's just more the concern of the seven versus the five.
So the seven feet is really the thing.
So you still want the houses to be like touchable downspouts? Is that what?
Downspouts are three feet, and five setback shouldn't be.
Five.
We're also looking, Commissioner, at other communities, all the communities around our area, and kind of the norms throughout the region as well, Fargo still has four-foot minimum setbacks in much of its zoning, all, you know, Fargo Moorhead, Dilworth, West Fargo, Grand Forks, East Grand Forks, it's all five feet, every, everywhere you go, five feet setbacks, we, we want Horace to be beautiful as well too, and we want diversity in housing, we want the neighborhoods to look attractive.
And please don't take what I'm saying to be like, I'm not saying what I said to be like catty, I just, I really am trying to understand, because I, I'm not in your field of work, and.
Yeah, it's, it's not a money grab, it's the, we.
I just want to make sure like I'm, you know, doing the right things, but I, I need to understand, like, what is truly the concern? Is it you, or is it like the, you know, the actual city?
You're in from, from our residents, our homeowners, and housing continues to be less and less attainable for most families, you know, most families require dual incomes, there is no entry-level housing, new housing anymore. Entry-level housing is the nineteen fifty's and sixty's houses.
Yep.
A brand-new house with the special assessments, with wider lots, additional special assessments, you know, it takes a dual income household with great jobs to afford it, a new home, even in, in more dense neighborhoods, so we're really just trying to expand homeownership to as many folks as possible, while still keeping Horace as beautiful and diverse-looking as possible in the housing stock.
Yeah, we got our fire chief still in the back of the room, I want his thoughts. You're here, I'm gonna use you, so what are your thoughts on this for the side setbacks?
I don't know, the requirements.
Okay.
Well, they said the requirement's five.
Yeah, the International Building Code dictates five feet.
Are you?
No, that's a section from P five, that is a section from the residential building
Okay, so your opinion, these dense neighborhoods, fire starts, how likely is it for another house to catch fire beside it?
I mean, it's always likely, it depends on the general deciding, what house they're putting together, we use my life to know, deciding to, to smell it down, but, I mean, it comes with a meeting of standards, that's.
Did you comment there?
Well, I can answer his question on that, my sister lived in a house in fertile, where it's a twin home, but not her connected to the home, the one next to her that hit by lightning started her home on fire. So, it is a four-foot five-foot, I don't know, really close, you know? So it is a four-foot, five-foot, I don't know, really close, you know.
Yeah.
But she did have her home set on fire from the house next door because of that.
Fargo does have a couple of levels closer than five feet.
Right.
Which is pretty nice.
Okay.
Well, I don't know what to do about that.
Sorry.
Haven't heard from Sarah in a while.
Is our friend still on?
I'm here. I'm listening.
What are your thoughts, Sarah?
Well... I'm struggling a little bit. I see both sides, you know. I, I understand why with the bigger footprint, they're looking at the smaller setbacks, fit more homes on the smaller lot, right? I get it. I don't agree with the smaller setbacks. I'm not opposed to going from a twenty-foot to a fifteen-foot side yard, right? Or a setback, you know, that way. That's something that Chris Mack talked about earlier. I, I don't have it right in front of me right now, but I'm not opposed to that. I don't like the five-foot side yard setbacks. I think it's too close. I think it poses problems if we have a situation not only for fire and rescue and first responders, but also you're looking in on your neighbors, right? You've got kitchen window that oversees the kitchen window to the person right next to you. And I don't think that's necessary there in Horace, I really don't. And so I feel strongly that we should have areas where we have started our homes, developer homes. We have several of those developments now. I think it's time to start looking at the investigation of our city and what we can do. And if that means going from a forty-five foot lot to a forty, or a fifty and accommodating that seven-foot setback, I'm not opposed to it, but I don't help these little setbacks for multiple reasons. And that's just a personal opinion.
Okay. So you want to go with the, the planning and zoning commissioners? The recommendation?
I, I don't, I don't like what I'm hearing about that we can't get the diversity in the style of homes because of an additional couple of feet. I, I don't like that. So, you know, forty-five foot lot, forty-eight foot lot, I mean, fifty foot, I don't give a, you know. I, I really am impartial to what it is. Whatever we need to do to be able to fit the diversity on the size of lot we can do. And five thousand, ten thousand dollars isn't going to make a break on a special assessment or something like that. I, I think so for that. So, and again, that's a personal opinion. That's not necessarily a trying to research market thing. It's just, I see, I, I have this developed strategy with an urgency. I drive through it. People can hardly go and get their garbage cans next to the side of their house and have enough room to put both their recycling and their garbage cans down to the bottom of their head. And I don't agree with it. We live in a harsh, communicative community. We should have enough room to be comfortable with your neighbors, but not be on top of your neighbors. Also, as a city, be able to serve our folks in the event of a rescue, have enough room to pull a ladder up without having to climb up the side of someone else's house to do it. That's just my two cents.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else?
So Sarah, are you suggesting that we consider increasing the minimum front lot width in CR to forty-eight or fifty?
I suggest that we have a conversation with the developers to discover what we need to do to make sure that we can get the diversity that we're requesting in these specific types of developments. But that would be a suggestion, one of many, that I think could be a topic that could be covered, but they may have some alternative ideas. So I will tell you, I'm not for the five-foot side block setbacks, not at all.
I agree with you, Sarah, on that.
I do too.
Okay, any other comments?
Sort of a public hearing, I think. Sort of a public hearing, I think.
I know, so I'm just asking if anybody's got anything else to...
I thought you were asking us.
If we were to move forward, Lucas and Jace, with, with how it is currently drafted, seven-foot side, forty-five frontage. If we were to move forward with that, but then at some point in the future, had conversations with people and thought to accomplish what really we're trying to accomplish that we needed to increase, like Sarah mentioned, of the forty-eight to the fifty? I mean, is that a arduous process?
It wouldn't be. I mean, I, I go on record, my, my recommendation would really not to reduce one of our more, or not to increase one of our more dense residential developments to even larger lot. And that's strictly coming out of homeownership attainability.
Okay.
It, it's something we can continue to discuss, but at forty-five, you know, I'm comfortable with. I don't want to see that minimum go up anymore. We have developers that do above and beyond, do different lot styles to accommodate those different types of home products. I don't think doing it up to a fifty-foot minimum is going to accomplish even more so what we want, other than we're going to see house prices continue to go up just because of that inventory is going to dwindle down. But in terms of your actual...
I'm concerned because they're telling us that if we keep it at forty-five, then we can't get the diversity that we're looking for. But if we go up to fifty, there's an assumption being made that we're going to price ourselves out of a specific market. I don't agree with that philosophy.
Can you comment on how to go to forty-eight? What's the problem? Go in the middle.
Right, what's the compromise? I mean, what do we have to do to give them the extra foot or two that they need to be able to put a three-stall on there to get the diversity we're looking for? There's got to be a happy medium here.
Maybe that's it. And maintain those seven-foot side setbacks.
I guess maybe another option is increasing the average lot size within that section. It's at forty-eight and pushing that up to just encourage a more wider variety of diversity within your lots. Then you'll increase it, but I don't know what your guys' thoughts are on that.
I just want to give them the room that they need to, you know, they're, they're saying that the seven-foot setbacks create an issue and it lowers the footprint. Well, then let's make that footprint what it needs to be so that they can get that diversity. And if that's a meter, nine or fifty, I don't know what that is. They can make that recommendation to us. Let's go there and let's give them that leeway so that they can make that diversity.
So two ideas for the council, just suggestions would be, I know Chris mentioned earlier about side yard setback on end lots. And it was a twenty-foot. If you reduce that side yard setback on the end lots, some of these examples that are provided said like twelve feet. And I'm just using it essentially, saying twelve, I'm not trying to recommend any number to you right now. But for conversation's sake, if you say twelve feet, that gives you sixteen feet that can be spread out amongst those lots in between the end lots on each end of the block. And the other thing that could be done, like Jace mentioned, was the variable lot size. If you say instead of forty-eight, it goes to fifty, but you ease up on the side yard setback on the end lots, that twenty down to twelve, you've created a bigger spread to where the intentions of the variable lot size was not to have all the lots the exact same size throughout. It was to have where you, you know, the original concept, if it was forty-foot wide lots, is you would have maybe a couple of forties, then you have a fifty or fifty-five, and then a forty, you have it scattered about, it varies. And the logic behind it was you have a different housing product on those lots then, right up, straight up. Because typically a builder isn't going to put a house that fits perfect on, you know, going lot. I say perfect and a lot of the builders that I know would probably go, well, I want to maximize my lot width. You know, from setback line to setback line, what can I fit for a house there? Well, a forty-foot wide lot house, they may have three houses that fit. On that fifty-five foot wide lot, they may have ten houses that fit. So the thought behind it is that they're not going to buy extra land just to buy extra land. They're going to buy the extra land to get another product there. And that's why we brought up the variable lot size early on was to encourage a variety of house, to not have monotony between houses or like that row feel that, you know, bothers council. And that's why we were trying to push the variable lot size to encourage a different product. So if you do...
And frankly, what, what you're saying, President, is we have the option on those end lots to make some adjustments to go from twenty, twelve or fifteen or whatever that means. That's a pretty simple solution to the deal.
If you...
It feels too brutal of what's done. I'd be curious on Chris's feedback on that.
But it frees up sixteen feet there if you went from twenty to twelve. And like I said, I'm just using it for example. And what I know Nate and Chris brought up to the side yard setbacks, they're, they're pushing for five and the conversation is either five or go seven. Where you tighten up or loosen, loosen up on each side, that gives you a bigger spread on your variability. And with that variability will push, should push them to where you have different lot sizes throughout. But you may have a situation where they just take the average, say, okay, I'm going to make the average across the board. And that defeats the purpose too.
That's mainly what happens though.
We, we've had quite a few developments that do have the variability. We have others that don't. So it does happen in both situations.
Yeah.
I would, I would say probably what, half and half, maybe? Two-thirds?
Yeah, half and half.
Two-thirds, one-third?
Yeah.
Two-thirds vary and one-third don't?
Yeah, as of recently.
Ballpark, I'm just guessing.
Good success with, with variable lot sizes throughout the different types of developments. It's just, I guess it's going to come down to what does the city want the developments to look like? Do you want more space between the buildings? And if that's the case, then I think we reduce the street side yard setback and potentially increase the variability in lot size requirement just to push for a different types of various products.
What would you suggest we reduce? It was fifteen and we increased it to twenty.
It got increased to, well, fifteen, yes, now under the current ones.
It said fifteen to twenty, we go, we don't go quite maybe seventeen?
Well, sorry, we're at twenty now.
We're at twenty right now.
Twenty is proposed.
Okay.
Currently, our ordinance states fifteen.
Yep, got it.
City Fargo's twelve and a half.
City Fargo's twelve and a half.
It says West Fargo is twelve. Jamestown is not less than eleven and not more than seventeen. That's interesting.
I, I'm, I'm not opposed to any of those. I, I'm more willing personally to take a look at an adjacent phenomenon, end lots, corner lots, than I would be between the halls.
I agree too, Sarah.
Awesome.
Yeah, we'd be very supportive of that because then you would have more room in the ends and then you could put that footage into the middle and then you could have that diversity. You'd have some fifty, fifty-twos, do two, two or three of them, and then you could switch it again. So that would be very helpful.
Yes, I, I agree as well. Commissioner, might I just also just remind you as well, to Jace's point, I believe, we're talking about the most, essentially the most dense residential zoning.
We'll call it the most densely strictly residential zone. Because the urban residential allows for some mixed book.
Correct. Yeah, and, and, you know, honestly, my, I love the, the very lot sized neighborhoods. That's my favorite. I love great looking, diverse looking neighborhoods. My life's work is in increasing homeownership rates throughout our community. It's the single largest driver of wealth for households. The more homeowners we have, the less renters that we have and the better off our communities are. And so I just, I think we, you know, it's not about the builders. Ultimately, we're trying to look at all of this through the eyes of our, our homeowners, our future neighbors, our future residents. And there's so many factors right now that are continuing to push homeownership out, out of the realm of possibility for any, any couples, any families. And so anything that we can do, I think, to continue to make ownership achievable for more families while still making sure the neighborhoods are beautiful and diverse is the goal here.
All right, anything else? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, guys. Let's, come up with the motion then, which one do?
What do you guys want to do, not to continue this conversation, but what do you want to do with the airstrips? There's nothing, there's nothing in it right now. As Jace referenced, the planning commission had a recommendation to include it as a conditional use under the egg zoning district. My question to you is what, what is the council's desire on airstrips being within the city's, city limits, ET zone, whatever? Right now, there is nothing in the books. So you cannot have a private or municipal airstrip within the city or its ET zone right now.
Just because there's nothing in the books, that means you can't have one?
Correct. If something is, is added, what does, why do you look confused? You can't just...
Typically, to your question, Councilor Trudel, or I think you're going with that because it's not added. There's usually language within a land use ordinance that relates it to if it can be compared to similar uses within the existing zoning tables. You're not always going to have all the uses that you want within a zoning table. Always that would be a thousand pages long. There's usually a general guide to then if a use is not listed, if it can be interpreted as similar to a use that is listed or under the same category, would then fall under permitted. Our current ordinance has it described as other and then its use is not permitted, but similar to the listed uses above will be listed under that. So in this case, you can't compare an airstrip to any use that's currently under egg strip, which would by default make it not something that's considered allowable, at least that I cover that.
And so, so my question to you guys is, one, how do you feel about airstrips in general? Two, if it is something that you're considering, obviously, the recommendation would be something under the egg district as a conditional use. That way you do still have control over what conditions you place on that, that use. And then it's a, do you just want municipal? Do you want to allow municipal and private? I don't know, it's, it's something that has gotten brought up and so we're now relaying it to you and you obviously were all at the meeting when it was discussed, so you know that there is the desire.
But we do have, yeah, the thing is to also have other concerns too, because there's going to be housing around it.
Yeah, that's a huge concern. The other thought too is that it's something where someone, if it is private, someone would just say, well, I consider this property to be an airstrip now and then no one can build within so many feet of that property. And Jace referenced that I looked at other municipalities in the area of what they're doing. They just have airports listed as a conditional use under the egg district and then say that, like West Fargo has reference to the airport authority. Kindred is silent on, on theirs. I think that airports has regulations. I don't know where those are. So Horace would essentially be creating a more robust ordinance on a municipal airport compared to what the other jurisdictions in this area have. My concern with just allowing it as a conditional use is that's wide open and what type of conditions do you put on it? And are those conditions then going to be deemed fair conditions? Because top of my head, the first thing you're going to do is say it can, it can only be within so many feet of residential use or residential development. And what, what is that, what is that distance? I think for compassion centers, we have twelve fifty, one thousand two hundred and fifty feet from a residential, either property or, or school or church. And it, and it's something too where maybe put the pause button on it, take out discussion of airstrips at this point, have your first and second reading of your ordinance and then we can continue to look at what the city wants to do for airstrips. But the, the planning commission has a recommendation to include it as a conditional use under egg districts. So if you guys are planning on doing a first reading tonight based on their recommendations, be careful of that because then you're going to approve having...
Can we just discuss it later?
And that's what I'm telling you. But, 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 no, it's a...
You'd remove it then.
It's a recommendation from the planning commission.
Yeah. So you can accept the recommendation?
I struggle with the need or any type of conditional use for an airstrip or an airport authority within municipal or city boundaries at this point in time without having the structure around it, explaining what the necessities are. An airport authority is a pretty big deal and so I would move to strike that or remove that language for the time being until we could have further discussions on what conditions would need to put around that. Not saying that there isn't a time and a place for agricultural spraying and whatnot, but I'm not sure a conditional use within city limits makes sense.
Yeah, and I don't think we'd use it for a commercial strip anyway in the city. I just, I don't see that happening. You know, for spraying, that would be, because that would get no commercial use.
You know, for spraying, that would be, uh, because that would get no commercial usage, I don't think we'd want to go there. I'm okay with that, I think we put that on pause, Lucas, that's going to have to be some more discussion, but I don't think we need to discuss it tonight. All right. What else do you want, I mean, everything else then?
We need to, if we're good with everything the planning and zoning commission recommended minus, we'll put the airstrips on hold.
Correct.
Then the last couple of things to discuss are the rezoning of the southeast corner of seventeen and seventy-six. Uh, from seventeen seventy-six to commercial. Are you guys okay with that?
Well, we kind of have to.
We don't have to do anything.
Yes.
I'm fine with that, that's.
Nothing's going to, whatever's happening there now isn't really working out for seventeen seventy-six.
Right.
So.
Okay, the next thing is adding language to the non-conforming section of the ordinance, uh, determining the grandfathering fate of existing and in process plats. And how I guess I would envision that within that blurb, we would list the, the projects that are currently in process. And then do it as well as things platted prior to whatever date we set, and I would assume, Lucas, we would make that as the adoption date, correct? In theory?
Adoption date of the ordinance?
Yeah. And so how do you guys want to handle that, do we do a, a clean cutoff of everything that was in process or platted before? And is zoned R six or currently proposed to be this compact residential is subject to the existing, meaning the R six setbacks? Or do we pick a, a lot width kind of range and say anything that exceeds that is subject to the new ordinance?
So, to find in process, because you and I have a different idea of what in process.
In process means a complete application that is currently going through the public hearing process or has been submitted to me. Because I have plats that were designed under the current ordinance, the one that we are under right now, that are going through the public hearing process. That we can't necessarily pull the rug out from under as those are going through.
If it's not part of the process, yes.
It might, it's when it's a completed application is what the trigger date would be.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Okay, so if, if you guys want to just do a clean cutoff, it would be probably cleaner in terms of how we manage billing permits and things like that. But it's up to you if we want to set a range, if you did set a range, I would recommend doing an actual range of saying lots forty to forty-nine feet. Are subject to this, just to allow some flexibility in the variety of product. Or will you just cut it clean off at the head and say going forward?
Cut it clean.
What's that?
Clean.
I agree, I agree.
I didn't hear that, can you repeat again?
Which part?
No, just they, the, the council is saying that they thought it'd be okay to go clean on this one, Sarah, that's all.
For anything prior?
Yeah.
And do we want to?
Or is that included?
We want to.
Give me some examples.
So like, let's take Southdale Fourth right now, that's currently building, and I, I guess I would request this to be really mainly your compact residential. Or your R six properties because everything else that's in the, the SR three, SR two, SR one. Are a conglomerate of the R four, R three, R two, R one, RE, SR, that are, should be wide enough to comply with those. It's really the compact residential with the switch from forty to forty-five that we're going to have that non-compatible issue. So I would limit that in terms of what is previously approved to property that was previously zoned to R six or property that's proposed under the new ordinance as compact residential. In that, but, so Sarah, for example, would be like Southdale Fourth that's currently building, I have a lot of lots that would not be able to meet. The minimum lot width nor would they be able to meet the minimum setback, rather than going through a thousand different variance applications. For each of those buildable lots, because this ordinance would render them unbuildable. It would be easier to do a non-conforming blurb that basically prohibit, or inhibits, allows for lots that are already built, already constructed or.
Right, right.
Or in process to be done. Follow me?
And, and I think I meant so much as far as. Plats that are already under construction. Let's put it in perspective, Southdale Fifth, Southdale Sixth, hasn't started construction yet, what would we do there?
Those would still be sub, in the way that I'm proposing as a clean cut, since the, the plat is approved and the plat has been recorded. We've approved it and recorded those plats based off a previous setback. So in my mind, those would still be subject to that five foot side yard setback moving forward. Because that's how, that's what they were designed to under that previous standard.
Would that also fall for Cub Second?
That would include your Cub Second, your Rivers Edge, well, Rivers Edge Second, yeah, Rivers Edge Second. Um, that would include, you know, current things that are in process, like ones that have designed their plats and are accepted applications like Willow Grove. Um, Deer Creek Estates Third Edition, one that we just previously approved.
Sounds good.
Um.
But those are some pretty big developments, Council, do you agree with that?
They're already in play, I mean.
They, yeah, they submitted their.
We have like a ton of variances then.
They submitted their application at the time when the, the existing land use code is in effect.
Yeah. Yeah, that wouldn't be fair to sit and have them go back at this point.
I don't think it's, it's clean, but I mean, there's a lot of development coming here that is going to be non-conforming and I want to be very clear that everyone on council understands that.
I share your concern, Sarah, I.
Me too.
I, I don't, unless, do you have another idea?
Well, something I do want to stress is, a change, changes like a land use ordinance. What may seem like a small change do take time, like quite a bit of time and when you're talking to setbacks and things like that, what you're talking about here. It's going to take years for that to really. Start seeing the effects, you're not going to see the effects in two years even, a whole lot, because. It's going to be impacting developments that get proposed to us, say, now. And, you know, if we're sitting down, talking to developer, say, this week here about a proposed development first time. That may be one of the first developments that you would see, that you see this change actually taking effect. And by the time you actually have houses go in, that's going to be probably a year and a half, two years out, it could be two years out. So it will take a few years before you actually start seeing some of these changes materialize. With the, with the change like the council's doing, upping the minimum lot sides and the side yard setbacks.
Yeah, I think it's, it wouldn't be fair to say that, have anybody have to go back, redo all that, being, their processes are in play right now. New ones, obviously, except that they've been cut, but not, not what's currently in play.
I agree, I, I don't think we want to have to go back, but I want the order of magnitude to be understood because these developments are big. And they're coming, and these changes will not be in effect in time to affect those developments, and I just want to make sure we all understand that.
I do.
I do.
Okay.
I sadly do, yes.
All right.
Okay, Jace will up that other one.
So the next one would be as we kind of discussed during our, our meeting and we could probably add to this of a reduction in the street side yard setback. I had it from twenty to fifteen, which is what our current ordinance says, if you guys are comfortable with going down to like a twelve. And again, this is your street side yard, so it's house and then street, there's not property between it.
Oh, we went, we already were going down from twenty to fifteen?
No, we are going up from fifteen to twenty.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you said it in reverse there, okay.
It was confusing the way it was worded, but yeah, we're going up from a current fifteen up to twenty feet. And so I don't know what the number you guys would like to fall on, and, long story short, there's a, a uniform development kind of case, our theory, planning theory of creating the same looking frontage as your street side yard and your front yard. And that's where this twenty foot side yard and twenty foot front yard come from. But there are several cases of people doing something different than that, which is okay.
So in order to gain that flexibility, does twelve to sixteen make sense, I mean, is there a range or?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't do a range, I would set your minimum.
What's such a minimum?
I like, let's start with fifteen, let's just go back to what we had as fifteen, would be my recommendation.
You guys all right with that?
Sarah?
Yeah, I got noticed that that does not allow the.
That's what I was going to say.
Yep. It sounded like it did.
Okay, long as it tickles, I'm not opposed.
Chris wants to speak there.
I mean, um. Fifteen will work, I mean, twelve, I mean, that's a lot of what they, what I was finding on other cities, um. You're going to get, I mean, at, at twelve, you're going to gain an additional six feet, um, to. Put into the other lots if it's, if it's all the same block, like what we were saying, to help with a little bit of diversity. I, it's not a huge amount, but. I'm okay with fifteen, but if we, if we did twelve, um, and match West Fargo or twelve and a half or even thirteen, that would. That, that footage could take a forty-five foot lot, make it a fifty, or you could take two forty-eights and make them a fifty. So it would give you a better range of the product that could fit on the home. Or fit in a, the product that can fit on the lot, I mean, so, just something to consider.
Hey, I personally am less opposed to that than I am the side yard setbacks and. I, I'm not against Jace's recommendation, but if it gets us a better product, more diversity in our homes, that's really what the goal is. If, a, a, am I correct that that's really what we're striving for, that diversity in the, looking homes, not the cut, cutters file rate?
Correct, yeah.
There, there's no theory in terms of fifteen, twelve, you know, twenty and twenty has a theory, but fifteen and twelve doesn't necessarily, if, if we want to try that as a way to encourage a diverse product in the interior portions of the block. I'm okay with calling it twelve, if you guys are.
I, I am too, and I, I think we can maybe all meet in the middle and everybody win in this one if, if we agree to that.
You guys all right with that then, go with twelve?
I'm okay with twelve. Okay?
I'll accept twelve.
Okay, and then we talked about airstrips. I think that was it, so I guess we, we would have a recommendation, accepting, what is this, Lucas, walk me through this, accepting the first reading.
A res, a res, a motion to approve the recommendations of the planning commission, uh, and approve the first reading of the.
With the set changes.
Land use code with the changes.
Do we need to strike airstrips from that as well?
That's part of the changes that they, to approve that.
What do you need me to?
A motion, a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance with the recommendations from the planning commission with the change to the airstrip.
And the side yard setback on the lot.
Side yard setback, yeah, corner setback.
Corner setback.
Want to make that motion? Don't you want to make it?
I'll make it, yeah, I'll second.
Okay. Definitely made a motion, I'm going to do a second, all right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries, all right, on to the next one, Brenton, you got it from the wire tower thing.
Uh, what's that? Yeah, I'll pull it up there, so, um. Not as exciting as land use ordinance, I guess, but wire tower here, uh, we, we've, we've had comments made over probably the past year or two here about our wire tower and. It's, luster is fading.
We've been talking about this for six years.
Yeah, I, I tried to be stupid short, um, but anyways, obviously the wire tower is pretty dirty, it's lost a lot, it's popped to it. Uh, like Corey said, past six years, it's been on off topic. Uh, council asked a while back of just, hey, what would it take to paint the wire tower? Uh, so I had our staff get a quote from Maguire Iron, they specialize in painting and maintenance of wire towers. So when we've had to do maintenance before, clean our wire tower, things like that, we've reached out to Maguire Iron. Um, they gave us a quote for, uh, basically cleaning, disinfecting, and what I'm saying clean is the interior and exterior. Uh, the interior, this, this could probably help us with, um, helping with any discolored water, you know, the casserole, connection casserole and the water line replacement project helped us quite a bit. Our water does sit in the water tower at times and that water, you know, is stained on metal. That metal, just like the wire lines, collected some of that rusted iron.
I thought you said it was constantly going, because we don't have.
Well, it goes quite a bit, but say like in the middle of night or something, you know, that, that iron rust discoloration does get on to there. Uh, anyways, and this is the feedback I've gotten from our public work staff on it. Uh, but anyways, the proposal that you see before you is from Maguire Iron to do cleaning, uh, disinfecting, clean in, interior, exterior. Installing safety equipment, basically new safety equipment for our public work staff to be able to climb up the tower for maintenance and do anything they need to. Or if they need to go up there and change a light bulb, they have had to do that before. Uh, Adam is normally the volunteer for that because I don't think anybody else really wants to go up there, don't have to, kind of freaks you out when you have to climb up that thing. Um. Also, this proposal, the hundred fifty-one thousand seven hundred would be for painting the water tower in, inside and out. Uh, that'd be with a basic, you know, one color, like you could do a white or the same type of light blue we had before. Or currently, uh, I wouldn't recommend black because black will heat in the summertime. Um, but like a white or lighter color, I'd recommend if you were to consider that. Within that proposal, the hundred fifty-one thousand seven hundred includes block style lettering for saying horse, like what we have up there now. Uh, if we want to put on the city logo, each, if you do one. Their estimate range is from seven to ten thousand, Adam was thinking it'd be more closer at ten thousand. Uh, to give you an idea, it'd be like what we have on our shirts, you know, or like what Corey has on his shirt there, it would just say horse with the sun on it. Um, that would be an example, if you wanted a different logo, we could do a different logo, but, uh. The initial thought process you had at staff level is if you did a painting and had the logo on it twice, because a lot of times you'll have. Two logo, one, two different directions, uh, that would get you. A hundred seventy-three thousand seven hundred, if I assume a ten thousand for one and a twelve thousand for the other logo. The reason why two thousand dollar difference is they were to reduce the amount by two thousand dollars if we weren't doing the block lettering. Uh, once you add sales tax and any other taxes and fees, that's why I indicated that I believe we can be able to do this for under two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, areas that we could pay for, most likely I would say hit the sales tax fund for that one. Another avenue could be wire fund, but I think sales tax would be the most appropriate and we're trying to get the wire fund to be more healthy. Um, to give you a reference of, you know, we're in one of the higher time periods for sales tax revenue. Typically it lags a little bit from when more of the sales occurred, uh, but Matt, do you recall like a ballpark, what was last month's sales tax? It was over, around two, wasn't it?
January was less just because typically less, December was almost a quarter.
Yeah, so December was around two hundred fifty thousand, I think January was around two hundred or so, but I'm just guessing ballpark, one eighty, yeah. So to give you a comparison about a month worth of sales tax revenue. For it.
Um, Matt, do we, what, I guess I have questions on, were we? You had mentioned we needed a new water, water tower.
Some point in the world.
We do.
So, I guess, would this one be coming down and we are decommissioning it and then we get a new one? Or what is your plan, because?
Yep, no, I understand.
I mean.
Are we painting it?
Be commissioned for a while.
So when?
Are you asking, are we painting it just for a short period of time and then tearing down? I don't think we'd be tearing it down, but Jim could talk about that because, yes, we do need another wire tower at some point. This thing does not service their complete capacity and you're going to get so much flow from casserole, even though they have a big million gallon water tower, you can only get so much from them. So if we have our own water tower, that does help us to be able to get the wire built up over time, but can you talk about that, the?
So these.
Timing.
These upgrades have been needed for years, the coating definitely started to fail, it has to be used right now for surge just within the city. It is dreadful, undersized, but, um, for the city to get a water tower, typically you go to the Department of Natural Resources or Water Resources to get funding for it. And when the DWR. And when the DWR funded the casserole tower, the justification for Horace gets to be a little bit less. So it will be some time before the justification for Horace is there to build a new tower. So this is a stopgap to get there. At that point, you can look at and see if it makes a lot of sense to keep it or to take it down, but it's going to be some time.
So what kind of warranty are we getting with this? What, I mean, it, what's it supposed to, how long is it supposed to last?
Has it ever been done before? Painting inside?
I do not know when the last time it was painted. Inside coatings.
Yeah, outside I think it's pretty original.
Is there like a lot of companies that do this? Do we need like another?
No. It's pretty specialized.
There, there isn't, there aren't a lot. McGuire Iron is the one who has done unthought it when it froze, done some repairs on it when it was had issues. So they're kind of, they're super.
They've painted some stuff in town too.
I'm almost more inclined, if we don't know the future of this water tower, I'm almost more inclined to proceed with the interior coating, which I recognize is probably necessary. I guess I, I don't know how I feel about spending the extra money on an outside painting and a logo if we don't know what the future of the water tower is. Maybe I'd rather save that money.
It, it is something though also, even if we have another water tower, it's something that basically, we already have the pipe connected to this one. So it's something that you could, well, I know one thought we talked about is
Wouldn't go to the same spot.
You could run two different water towers and you have this one as your backup in case you have to do maintenance and things like that. So it isn't bad to have two water towers either. And then later on down the road, say ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, if it's not needed and we're comfortable with what we have, then the city could take it down or keep it there. It's, I don't know of any requirement saying that you have to tear it down.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Can we talk about the process of maintenance and what the expected longevity would be?
Jim, are you aware of?
I am, I don't know. I didn't even, I didn't think I'd even seen the quote for this, so.
Well, we could pull it through.
He did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just talking.
I was asking Jim what he knows of it. So Sarah, you're asking like the process to be able to go through doing this?
No, I'm asking, what's like, I mean, this water tower's been for a long time, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Not gonna last if we don't do it, but
Correct.
Does it pay for itself longevity wise as far as the maintenance and the recoating and everything? To get us by, if we can get to the next water tower and once we get to that next water tower, would it still have a useful life at that point while we could get some use out of it as a backup?
That's what we were just talking about. Yeah, you'd use it as a backup tower, even if we brought in another one. And that's the thing, like Jim was just mentioning, it might take us a little while before we get that other water tower because we have to size it appropriately for one thing. And look, right now, casserole's water along with this tower is going to provide us for a while until we can get to that point where we're going to need that new tower. So.
I mean, if we're not gonna like decommission it and throw it out the door, then I see value in, in painting the outside, but if you guys are gonna say to me, you know, hey, we're gonna tear this, tear this thing down. We don't want it anymore. I don't really want to waste the money.
No, but I think that we want to get it OSHA compliant and that's something we're not OSHA compliant for at all right now. Need to get it back up to need to get it up, need to get it up to speed. We've been talking about this over a while now. And so, I mean, I'm fine with the, this is gonna be up here for a while. We kind of want to make it look nice again. Right now, it's looking pretty cruddy and it has for the last three, four years, as far as I'm concerned. I don't have any problem putting a logo on there. I think those pictures you guys have got here make the thing look really nice. It is one of the landmarks.
I just think we only need one logo though. We don't need to have more than one.
That's your, that's the council's call.
Yeah.
Yes. It's, do you want one? Do you want two? Where you, yeah, it's.
Yeah, one's fine.
And how much, I mean, I think one's probably sufficient and the cost for to put the logo is between seven and ten, correct?
Ballpark. They're giving a ballpark.
Okay.
So if we did a city logo, say you did one city logo and it was ten thousand dollars, they'll take two thousand dollars off because we wouldn't be doing the block lettering, just saying horse on it. And so.
That's more expensive?
Pardon?
That's more expensive?
No, they were, the block lettering, they said it's about two thousand dollars.
Oh.
So they built that in their price of a hundred fifty-one thousand seven hundred. So
Yeah.
If a logo costs ten thousand, take two thousand off, it's eight thousand dollars. So and they would refine, they would give us more specific as, you know, we'd give them the logo and say, hey, give us this exact, you know, this one, but you're in that ballpark there.
But I'd also say to, to paint it white, don't just like this, you want the logo stands out. Otherwise, you'll blue it, it would fade into the, into that. You know, light blue will fade in.
Yeah, hate to say this, just by doing a quick, really, really quick, just Google search, painting water tower adds easily, it says easily ten years useful, or adds ten years of high quality and useful life to the wire tower. I think when you're painting inside and exterior, that helps quite a bit more. So I think you're going to get more in ten years out of it. You're probably get, I mean, if this was the original paint job, we're going off a long time. I don't even know when this water tower was built, so.
Adam knows, I forget.
Adam, probably knows.
It's in the seventies.
Seventies.
It's kind of a focal point on all of our websites and it's really big focal points, especially with, uh, it's been a huge part of Old Horse for a long time. I,
Yep.
I like the idea of the logo on there.
Um, we did check with, our staff did check with casserole. They would be able, we were concerned about transition, like how much of a downtime it would be, but it sounds like that's not a concern to casserole. So during that time, they would have to turn off this wire tower, obviously the paint inside and all that. We anticipate that would take a couple of weeks to do, but casserole is indicated, it shouldn't be an issue. We were trying to target a low, lower usage timeframe, like the spring or the fall. That way you don't have it when people are wiring the yards as much and stuff too. Of course, this year, who knows, is pretty, pretty off a little bit, so. But we would try to target spring or fall. I know if we were to do this, I would try to push for a spring because I think we would like to have it in place before the summertime and people could enjoy it, you know, like bean days and times like that, so.
Any other comments?
No.
Did I hear that what, what sales tax revenue right now will cover this entire expense and that's all?
Yeah, we're, we're basically right now, we're getting somewhere between a hundred and eighty and two hundred and twenty-five thousand a month of the sales tax. So I mean, it's basically one month of sales tax revenue to handle this one.
To add ten years plus of longevity. Okay, you answered my question. Thank you.
Yep. Well, I guess what I'd recommend, guys, is we get the interior handled, painted, squared back up again. And then the outside, you painted white.
Would you like to do the propos, the proposal with one logo? That was kind of what I understood?
Yep.
Okay.
With the white exterior, I think, because that's going to look better with our logo than be more pronounced.
So you want to make a motion for changes?
I'll make that motion. Okay.
Just makes a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second. All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.
All right, Brenton, go ahead and get that one. Pin the pipe.
Okay. Next item we have here is appointment to the Cass Clay Food Commission. The Cass Clay Food Commission, basically, is a group meets monthly, talks about just different food needs within the community. Jason has been on this as more of a X or I'm drawing a blank, sorry. I was going to say a proxy, a proxy vote. A lot of the Cass Clay Food Commission are elected officials on there, so any of the council could serve as an appointed official on, but you don't have to be. You can have like a staff member serve on that, like Jase has been for the city in the past here. But they talk about just different food related type activities within the community and how they could help.
Build the food network through the Fargo Moorhead Metro.
Yes.
Is that working for Rita? Rita, do you status if she's the one that handles that one?
I don't know.
No.
It's, it's really, it's led by Adam Olenberg.
From MetroCog.
Through MetroCog.
Yeah. Oversized by MetroCog.
Yeah, so. Like I said, they meet once, I, I believe, once a month in Fargo Commission Chambers. If any of the council would like to be the appointed individual for that, you can. If it's staff, I gotta look at Paul there because we were talking of, we'd not make Paul from staff if you wanted to have a staff member do this, so it would free up Jase a little bit.
Paul and Mike? Mike?
I think Paul would probably be the most from the angle of the communication side and your acting of.
I'm good with that.
That, so.
I would love to nominate, I would love to nominate Paul for this position.
Paul, you okay with that?
Yep.
All right.
That would be fabulous. Thank you for doing that.
So you need to do a motion for that one though?
I make a motion to appoint Paul to serve as our liaison to the Cass Clay Food Commission.
Okay, Steph, you make some motion. Can I get a second?
I will second.
This is second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Congratulations, Paul. I was quitting.
Sorry, Paul. He was excited about this. We know he was really excited, so. He gets a chance to get out of the office once we, here once a month.
When in the town.
Okay, the next one here. Let me pull it up here. Southdale Farms ID Agreement, Southdale Farms Sixth Edition ID Agreement. Been working with Lucas on this one, I believe. There wasn't much changed on this from what we've seen in the past.
Can we just whip through it quick?
Yeah, just whip through it.
Perfect. So the particular improvements for Southdale Farms Sixth was submitted March eighth, twenty twenty-three. The city created water sewer storm in Street Improvement District number twenty twenty-three dash one on March twentieth, twenty twenty-three. So quite a while ago, this ID agreement covers Southdale Farms Sixth Edition. Jim's estimated costs for the project are three million, three hundred forty-eight thousand dollars, which means that the, so that's the total cost. The cost to construct minus the, the soft costs such as legal, admin, bonding is two million, seven hundred eighty-four thousand dollars. So the developers required to put up a letter of credit, sixty-five percent of that amount, which is one million, eight hundred nine thousand, six hundred dollars. The next special provision would be the land dedication, section twelve. Developer agrees to contribute eighty-seven thousand, two twenty-eight and ninety cents as payment in lieu of land dedication for Southdale, Southdale Farms Sixth Edition to satisfy the land dedication requirements. The city will hold that in a separate fund and the Park District can request that. Cass Roll will be providing water for this one. The city will include those infrastructure within its project and then Cass Roll creates its own district, assessment district, and then charges that out after Jim gives them the numbers. Wastewater Service will go to Lot One, Block Two of Southdale Farms First Edition. Storm Sewer will flow to an existing detention, to an existing detention pond in Southdale Farms First Edition and then go to the Cheyenne River or Drain Twenty-Seven. This is also the agreement where we had the landscape buffer along sixty-six, but the fence is installed. So that negated the requirement for the landscape buffer. We did add to this though. The city will own and maintain this fence at its sole discretion. This maintenance free fence also extends into the rear yards of Adamant addition and the development. The city will not own or maintain this portion of the fence as it was installed on private property. It is the responsibility of the property owner where the fence was installed to maintain the fence if they desire. So what we wanted to do there was for the portion of the fence that was installed on private property, the city's all done that one. It's going to be up to the, to the property owner to take care of that fence. But the one that's installed in the boulevard area that we discussed in a previous meeting, the city will be responsible for that because that's within the city's right of way. Section eighteen, access, access to, to the development will be from the east side of Sixty-Sixth Street South. Future access from the east side of Seventy-Second Avenue South will go through the proposed Willow Grove addition. Construction of Sixty-Sixth Street South started in twenty twenty-three and is completed to the north side of Seventeenth Avenue South. Work to connect Sixty-Sixth Street South to Sixty-Fourth Avenue South is anticipated to be completed in twenty twenty-four. Sixty-Sixth Street South is an important residential collector for both motorists and non-motors in this area. A new section that we have now added to ID agreements is in regard to mail delivery service.
I saw that. I was going to ask you about that.
The developer is responsible for coordinating with the U.S. Postal Service regarding the location and placement of mailboxes and or mailbox clusters prior to issuance of any building permits in the development. The city is not responsible for ensuring mail delivery is made available to the development. This lies, this responsibility lies solely with the developer, including any costs associated therewith, which will not be included in the special assessment district. Purpose of this is because the city has been getting blamed for mail delivery type issues and has had issues with getting those mailboxes and mailbox clusters installed. So now it is the responsibility of the developer. Councilmember Turo, do you have a question on that?
I do.
Your face tells me that you do.
So what if the U.S. Postal Service is not responsive? We're not issuing permits then? It could be held up on, by the postal service?
Yeah, as it reads now.
I believe, my understanding is the developer has completed method and delivery agreement with the post office. Now, that's what they're trying to push and they have to get them at the delivery agreement hashed out anyways within it, so. It would just be, mailboxes are.
So what's the avenue for the developers, like if it doesn't get hashed out, like would they, they would come to us, so they'd have to go to the?
They would go to the postmaster and if they were not getting responsiveness from the postmaster, then they go to the regional postmaster or the individual over that. So, but one example is like if a contractor hits a mailbox, then it's a matter, like right now, if there's, say, somebody goes and hits a mailbox when houses are being built, the development's been up for a year or so, then it gets into the, well, who pays for that mailbox? Who, it, it becomes more and more an issue. And to alleviate and remove the city from that dynamic, we'll do the dressing of all the properties as our responsibility to work with the county and do all the dressing of the properties and plat. But for the mailboxes, that should be interaction between the developer and the postal service. Where those boxes are located and installation of them.
When does that end?
When the development is done.
Obviously, the development has a bunch of homes in it and at some point, that cluster gets taken out, who's responsible for it?
So if you have a bunch of homes in it, my understanding, and I look at General Lucas, if they have any other thoughts on it, but my understanding is once there's homes built there and they're occupying that cluster box, they own the, my understanding is that they own, the residents do. The residents do. Just like if you had a mailbox, individual mailbox.
Okay, so, so we're getting back into that, that issue with the, we'll just say the, the mobile home park here. Gets to shovel out the mailbox cluster. You say the residents do. I'm assuming it's going to be the same thing for one of these developments then?
Correct.
The residents themselves have to shovel out the mailbox?
The postal service will tell you, we're not delivering mail.
I've heard them tell me that they couldn't because out of Trail, it's no bank.
And it's not, it's not the city's responsibility to go clean out mailbox.
So a lot of it boils down to the mode of delivery agreement as well.
Yeah.
Just curious.
Yeah.
Okay, so Jim and or Lucas, how did we address or can we address in this ID agreement, the change order that was put onto the Sixty-Sixth Street project for the water service that goes into Southdale Six? Does that cover, is this by the agreement?
I don't know what that is.
It's basically a portion of a different project that she wants assessed to the Sixth Edition and not to the whole district of Sixty-Sixth Street. Do we want, do you want to break it up, put a section in there? I mean, it'll happen through the special assessments of Sixty-Sixth Street, but we've never done anything like that in an agreement that I can remember. Something specific to a area.
Something specific to a area.
I'm just asking about how that's going to pan out, whether it be in this ID Agreement or the special assessment process. Doesn't matter to me, but I have a number of neighbors that would be concerned about it.
So if it's, if it's for something like that, what the city's done in the past is just have that on the special assessment list or in the numbers that Jim will originally provide to the Special Assessment Commission will have that broken down as its own column. And then the Special Assessment Commission will address it and then present it to the city council, as they've done on other ones.
Yeah.
Which is a matter of making sure that it gets included in that list.
I think we need to make sure it gets included in that list, which is the second or third time I've brought it up. So I wanna make sure that that is not a question because those are costs that should be assessed to that district.
And that too for the assessment process.
Yeah, I mean, if they're in the, if the property's in the district and they receive a benefit from it, then, then yes, they will get the assessment for it.
Okay, anything else?
And this, this district is all new development, correct? That's what I'm seeing. Okay, all right, I'm just checking.
Southdale Six, so it would be just north of.
It's just, it's all developer.
I think the, the map is on the.
It is, yeah. I was just, because I was gonna ask with regard to notices. Okay.
All right, any other questions?
No.
No.
Okay. Any changes to what we're concerned?
Otherwise, I'm open for a motion to accept the ID Agreement as is. I'll make that motion. Jeff makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Sure.
Say how he does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion period.
So I'll touch base really quick and then Lucas can again, can expand on these since he's been the one drafting up the agreements on these different ones. But the purchase agreement for Sparks Edition is the first item. And in the ID Agreement, there is some overlap within both of these. However, within these agreements, it, I do believe, we, we thought we need to have some guidance from the council on some elements within this. And Lucas, I could expand on, we'll expand on that in just a second. But we really got to a point where, like the purchase agreement, there's some different elements there of, what's council wanna do? We don't wanna have you feel cornered or anything. We want you to make sure you know what is in that agreement and what it entails. So Lucas, do you wanna run through the purchase agreement and then expand on the ID?
Yeah, so.
You enjoyed authoring these?
The purchase agreement and ID Agreement, there's been various versions of these. There's been back and forth with the city and the developer's representative. I sent what I thought were final versions to these agreements last week. Developer has, developer's representative has additional requested changes. I did not have time to make those today. But, but we'll discuss those as well. So what I'm gonna read to you now is what I thought was final last week. Again, there, there could be potential additional changes to.
Lucas, is that what's in our packet?
Yes.
I'm not sure which one you got.
Yes, from Friday.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So you have, you should have the version Lucas has.
Okay.
And then we had some other comments in the version that Lucas has. There was the may versus shall conversation that we wanted to touch base on for that. So we include shall but, for the conversation, but we'll need to talk about that.
Okay, so it's good that we're looking at the same one. So section one, it just discusses, there's, there's a lot of parcels with Sparks Edition that are being transferred to the, from the developer to the city, whether that's via plat dedication or the city's purchasing it. So I wanted to make sure that those are all put in writing so we can keep track of those because, like I said, there's, there's various lots that are being transferred in this. So Lot One, Block Five, Lot Eighteen, Block Five, Lot One, Block Six, and a portion of Lot One, Block Seven are being dedicated to satisfy the land dedication requirements.
The nine point six eight acres.
Yes.
Yep.
And of that nine point six eight acres, Lots One, Lot One, Block Five, and Lot One, Block Six will be dedicated on the plat. Lot Eighteen, Block Five will be dedicated to the city via a warranty deed at the closing of Lot One, Block Seven, which the city is, is purchasing a portion of that. And will also acquire that or have that transferred via a warranty deed. Reason for that is, we'll get into that later on. Just note that there's different ways these are being tracked. This is a confusing purchase agreement and ID Agreement, so bear with me.
I did ask Jace to pull up the plat, so if we do question, have questions on any of what lots are what, we can show you.
And the city purchasing was the two point five eight acres at the four point square foot.
Yeah, so the city's gonna be purchasing a portion of that one there. And then this one's getting transferred to the city via warranty deed, but that is being transferred to satisfy the land dedication requirements. The purpose of us doing a deed is so if the developer later on in this agreement, they have an option to purchase those lots back. So if they do, then we'll have it, we'll have a deed that's reported on it instead of just relying on plat dedication. We've had issues with the county on ensuring that the city actually takes ownership of these lots. There's also concern that if the plat reference is dedicated to the public for public use, that can the city just transfer that lot later on, sell it back later on? So to avoid those issues, both those lots will be transferred via warranty deed instead of transferred on the plat. So to transfer property, the city can either do it via plat dedication and sign off as an owner, or we can do it with a deed, so a separate warranty deed that gets reported with the county. Does that make sense? Looking at you because it, I feel like it's.
No, I get it. I'm just very tired right now.
I am too.
This is a, and this is a complicated.
This is not my choice to be doing this at nine o'clock at night. Carrying on with that, so section two gets into what the, the purchased property is and that's where the city will be purchasing two point eight five acres of Lot One, Block Seven. The purchase price in section three is the city agrees to pay seller four dollars per square foot for the purchased property. So four dollars per square foot for the two point eight five acres, which equates to four hundred ninety-six thousand, five hundred eighty-four dollars. Section five is where we get into conditions, and this is where this section might change. But as it reads now, section five, conditions for Lot One, Block Seven. Seller is dedicating a portion, two point one five acres, and selling the remaining portion, two point eight five acres, of Lot One, Block Seven to the city with the desire that the lot may be used. This is Brent's maybe shall language. May be used to promote a public amenity to benefit the residents of the city such as a city hall, rec center, community center, hockey arena, pub, public pool, performing arts center, or similar use. If the city finds a use but seller disagrees, seller must provide reasoning as to why the intended use is not acceptable. The parties will cooperate to resolve any disagreement. If the parties are not able to find an acceptable use within five years of the effective date of this agreement, seller has the option to purchase the lot for three dollars and eighteen cents per square foot for the portion of the lot that was dedicated to the city, four dollars per square foot for the portion of the lot that was purchased by the city, and reimbursement to the city for any special assessment payment made by the city in that five-year period. So essentially saying, if they can't agree on a use, buy it back for what the city essentially paid for it.
Makes it a wash.
Headman dedicated for it. Seller shall provide written notice of intent to exercise the option to purchase within the sixty-day window after expiration of the five-year period. This next part gets good. And shall close on the lot within one hundred and twenty days after the expiration of the five-year period. If seller does not provide written notice of intent to exercise the option to purchase within sixty days after the five-year option date, the city will have all rights to sell or keep the lot. Section six gets into City Hall, which these, these conditions in this section were previously discussed with the council. So they shouldn't be of any surprise. The city shall build, or maybe this is where your shall may be.
Yeah, it's the City Hall one, number six.
The city shall build a new City Hall on Lot Eighteen, Block Seven, or Lot One, Block Seven. So those two lots that I pointed out earlier. Shall build a City Hall on one of those two lots. The parties agree that the new City Hall will be a minimum of twenty thousand square feet, have at least two stories, have glazing requirements of thirty percent for the sides facing Sparks Boulevard and Third Street South, and have twenty percent brick, stone, dry bet, or similar masonry products for the same sides. No vinyl siding will be allowed. Infrastructure to be installed during the first phase. The improvements of Sparks Edition will be north of Luther Avenue and infrastructure will not be constructed south of Luther Avenue during the first phase. It goes on to say that the, the city or the developer can petition for the second phase improvements to be constructed.
Really quick, should we touch base on, since we're in that section? The lots, why we said shall versus may?
Yeah.
So if you say shall, one of those two lots, we would build a City Hall there. If you say may, you may build one there. So it really comes down, in overall conversations, we're originally pursuing the southern lot. Sorry, Lot Eighteen, I believe it is. We were originally pursuing that one. However, it got to be a concern at staff level of, doesn't it make more sense to recommend to council if you were to build City Hall in Sparks Edition to have it on the north lot? And the reason why, and I know Jack and you are talking about like infrastructure. Well, if we go with the south lot, we're gonna need Sparks Boulevard, like the racetrack and some of that other infrastructure. So we're gonna be putting a lot more infrastructure in upfront. Where if we go to the north lot, a lot of the infrastructure from Sparks First Edition, what they're working towards for that first round of the development, you would have access and infrastructure right there. So it'd be already within the Sparks First Edition. We wouldn't have to do more project costs just to get us access and then the potential of City Hall kind of being out on an island for a while. So those are, that was the reasoning behind, okay, do we go with the, recommend the north lot if you were to want to have City Hall there? So the developer is asking for the word shall to be included on paragraph six versus City Hall. The city shall build. And staff are saying, do you wanna say may or do you wanna say shall? And that's the question for council. When we went through different talking points, or points include within this purchase agreement, the city was targeting that south lot, or, you know, targeting's the right word, but focusing on that south lot, eighteen, within it. So looking for some flexibility, but at the same time, if the city is comfortable with that north lot, awesome. Or the south lot, we keep shalling there, move forward. Makes it to where then we're able to start having some conversations about City Hall because we'll know a location. But that's where we're coming from and the reason why we're looking at that. Number seven, that paragraph where it talks about phase two construction that I was talking about. If we go to the south lot, we need to have phase two construction in order for the viability of City Hall to be down in that lot. And it costs more money for, you know, upfront, down the road. Probably not, it's just that we have more upfront costs. I say that, you know, because we'd have to bond the money. And I don't know exact dollar amount, but I'm assuming it'll be a couple million dollars because you're looking at quite a big road there and underground included in it, so.
So what, what infrastructure costs, I mean, we don't have a timetable on City Hall. But what infrastructure cost will the city be responsible for? I mean, is that set out in the agreement? Regardless of which.
For the development?
Yeah.
It'd be what the city has through the special assessment process.
On the land that we, were dedicated and that we purchased. Okay, all right.
Yeah. And if the city does say, hey, we wanna take on, you know, a different amount or like a greater amount or something, that's up to the council to decide, is my understanding. Sorry, you're up to there, Lucas.
No, that's.
I just sort of hash it out as we're through it, so if council has any opinions on that.
You guys wanna make a decision on it now or you wanna keep going?
Keep going.
Section eight talks about a special assessment deferral on lots one and two, Block Eight, and Lot Nineteen, Block Five. I believe those are commercial lots since they've requested a deferral on, on those lots for two calendar years. The rest of that just kind of lays out what that deferral actually looks like, spells it out in writing, so there's no confusion later on. Section nine, letter of credit requirements. Upon certification of the special assessments, the city agrees to reduce the principal amount of the letter of credit by the special assessment values on lots one, Block Five, Eighteen, Block Five, One, Block Six, Lot One, Block Seven, and Lot Eighteen, Block Four. So essentially what this section is saying is that whatever the estimated values, or whatever the certified values of specials are on those lots, we can take that amount off of the letter of credit requirement. The developer, as one of the changes today, asked to have that rather be the estimated specials. So once Jim comes up with the estimated specials on those lots, that the letter of credit can be reduced in that amount. And that way, it's, it'll be before they actually have to get a letter of credit. With the way it's written now, they'll have to get a letter of credit and then it'll be reduced once the specials are actually certified. So changing it to estimated specials allows for a reduction in the letter of credit requirement upfront for that first letter of credit, if that makes sense.
Certification of specials is typically about two or three years out after we bond the money. So they would have to hold the letter of credit for the full amount, or for that full amount.
In that one, I have.
If we didn't do the estimate.
I have no issue with, with that one. It's just the ID Agreement's gonna have to change because we don't know what those estimated values of the specials are yet. So note too, like Brent said, right away, these, the purchase agreement and the ID Agreement, they have similar sections within them. So both are gonna need to change if you guys accept the, the developers recommended changes today. Closing, we're shooting for March fourteenth. We should be able to do that. Access, the city has access to the dedicated property and the purchased property upon execution of the purchase agreement. City is responsible for the cost of any surveys, abstracts, and the cost of title examination, preparing warranty deeds and recording the warranty deeds. Seller is responsible for any title correction that's needed. City has the ability to examine the abstracts to, to do a title opinion. Section fifteen, seller represents that they own the property in good standing. Section sixteen is boilerplate, representations and warranties. Section nineteen, we wanted a contingency in here to say that this agreement is contingent upon recording of Sparks Edition plat with the Cass County Recorder's Office. I don't want you guys getting stuck with just dirt that has no plat tied to it, no meets and bounds description. Section twenty, taxes and special assessments, except for the special assessment deferral in section eight. Seller agrees to pay all real estate taxes and installments of special assessments or assessments for special improvements. Due levy or assessed for the year twenty twenty-three, which are due and payable in twenty twenty-four and prior years. After that, the city is responsible for the sole cost. And then everything else is just boilerplate. So that's the, the purchase agreement. The changes that were requested by the developer that the council needs to consider. That one where I talked about estimated specials instead of certified specials. And then in that section where I discussed the conditions for Lot One, Block Seven, the developer's representative also asked that that include Lot Eighteen, Block Five because the city's not sure where to put a City Hall. And then, yeah, two other requests, but I'm gonna say no to them on those. One was, one was in regard to reimbursement for design fees, which is included in all our improvement district agreements. That has not changed since we started doing it. And then the other one was indemnification, which is the standard indemnification language that we use for all of our ID Agreements. And those changes were to the ID Agreement, not the purchase agreement.
Which we could work on, the, the design fee reimbursement, we could figure that out, so.
Non-negotiable. Do you want, do you have any questions on the purchase agreement?
We threw a lot at you. We know that.
Jack, what are, what are your thoughts about the north versus, I'm just curious, the north versus the south parcel for future?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Lance from the.
council member Lance from the, the, yeah, like, like Brent said, the initial discussion was for the southern lot to be the place for city hall with the northern lot being the, uh, place for the amenity. And the recent discussion that we've had was to give the city flexibility to put the city hall on the north lot instead. And then that would make the public amenity lot the south lot. Um, I guess, I think, I think there's value in that, uh, that idea because then, um, you know, we don't necessarily need to do a whole new phase to get the city access. So if the city is moving forward faster than we are on the, you know, phase two improvements, then the city would have access to that lot and they could start moving forward with their, with their city hall. Um, I think that, you know, makes us feel more comfortable that we're not going to get stuck putting in a big phase without quite being ready. So I think that's kind of a win-win for both parties. For that flexibility.
Okay, any other questions?
I don't think I have any other questions.
Okay, so now we'll jump to the ID agreement. Uh, again, this is our, our standard ID agreement with modifications to accommodate, uh, the development. Uh, for this one, petition for improvements was submitted, uh, dated November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, the city created water sewer storm in street improvement district number twenty twenty-three dash seven on December fourth, twenty twenty-three. This agreement covers the Sparks Edition. The engineer's opinion of probable project cost, so the total cost is six million, eight hundred and ten thousand dollars. The engineer's opinion of probable construction costs, which excludes the soft costs, is five million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Section five, um, states that the developer is responsible for a le, a letter of credit, um, in the amount of sixty-five percent of the engineer's opinion of probable construction costs. This section will likely need to change if we, um, if the city accepts estimated specials being removed instead of the certified specials, we'll do it right away. Um, and then change that section to say that the developer is responsible for sixty-five percent of the engineer's opinion of probable construction costs for the improvements, less the estimated value of specials on those various lots that I read previously. So that's how that section would be changed. So with, without those, those lots being taken off, that letter of credit would be three million, six hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. So if we take off the estimated specials, it's obviously going to be less than that amount, so just, just so you guys are aware. Uh, section six talks about those, um, the deferment of specials on those, uh, lots one and two, block eight, and lot nineteen, block five, which again, I think those are the commercial lots in this first phase. And then section, section eleven is where we had in there that upon certification of special assessments, the city agrees to reduce the letter of credit in the amount of the special assessments levied on lot one, block five, lot eighteen, block five, lot one, block six, lot one, block seven, and lot eighteen, block five. If the city agrees to use the estimated specials, once Jim has those, that sentence will be removed from that section because it's no longer needed. Section twelve, again, the conditions for lot one, block seven, the developer has requested that lot eighteen, block five also be included in that, um, section. And I need to massage that because lot eighteen, block five was, is being dedicated, so the purchase back option is not the same. And this language just needs to be cleared up to address that. If it's lot eighteen, block five, that the developer has an opportunity to buy back, it'll be at three dollars and eighteen cents for the whole thing. Because there is no purchase involved upfront with that one, so keep that in mind. Section thirteen, again, just talks about the, uh, conditions for the city hall on lot one, block seven, or lot eighteen, block five. Section fourteen discusses the design engineering fees, which again, that's the boilerplate language that we've been using since twenty twenty-one. Section fifteen, just references again the various lots that are being dedicated. Section sixteen, Caswell. Section seventeen, um, do you know what wastewater lot, what's the wastewater lot?
Not at the moment.
Lot eighteen.
Lot eighteen, block five?
Block four.
Should we test, Jack? Congratulations, you're right.
That's stormwater.
Good job, Jack.
That's stormwater, I'm sorry.
I need wastewater.
It's over by the tree row.
So a proposal station on lot one.
Sanitary utilities.
Yep, yep.
There it is.
So a proposal station.
Lot one.
I don't know what block it is. Lot one, block.
Nine?
Lot one, block.
Yeah, see the struggle here, Jack, with some of these? You can't read them. So that's, the wastewater is proposed to be on lot one, block nine. Uh, storm sewer, we'll go to lot eighteen, block four. Mail delivery service was added in this one as well, and then that's it for special provisions, so. As far as action from the council, the, the may shall language and then the estimated versus certified specials for those lots. And then I just need to add in language to that section that discussed conditions for lot one, block seven to include lot eighteen, block five, if that's what the council desires, I can change that in the PA and the ID agreement.
Can you, can you remind me in, in our process here, there are a few uh, existing properties that are within this assessment district? What's our, where are we at in the process again for, uh, notices to prop yours and hearing?
We need the engineering report.
That will be the next step?
We need the engineering report completed, and once you guys have the engineering report, then we have the estimated, or the estimate information that we can actually share in a public.
Okay, and that is an additional future step. Okay, thank you.
Yep. All waiting on numbers and it takes time to get the numbers, so I understand, I understand that, so.
Okay.
I do.
Any other questions for Lucas?
Okay.
You guys want to do?
I suppose a recommendation would be we approve the, uh, purchase agreement with the said changes, or should we do them both together that you guys?
We need to know what said changes you want.
Well, what'd you say?
We need to know what said changes, like the may and shall and estimate.
The, the discussion on the changes will apply to both documents. If you guys want to address them separately, that's fine. Yeah, they're, they're very similar documents.
So the, the wording, the shall and the may?
I, I leave to you guys, I prefer if you guys have discretion, the developer's representative wants
Certainty.
More certainty to that decision on where city hall is going.
But we just discussed that you were okay with the flexibility between north and the south lots.
Well, the may gives you flexibility beyond just Sparks. Shall ties you to one of those two lots, which either, either one's fine with us, the staff. But we want to make sure that it's the council's direction of where, what you want us to do.
Oh, I mean, I have no desire to take city hall out of the Sparks development.
I don't think anybody does really.
I mean, however, you know, there's an election coming up, so another person who.
If you say shall, it ties us to those lots, one of those two lots.
Nice one, or something.
To me, the first time I heard about things in lots was tonight.
Within Sparks, you mean, Sarah, or?
Yeah.
I, I think, I think.
I'd like to have that flexibility. I want to have more discussion about the infrastructure and what makes sense.
Within, within Sparks.
But within Sparks, like you're not, the, the whole, um, concern was that we could, with may, we may put it in the Sparks Edition or we may not.
Correct.
No, I, I'm, I'm not going in that direction. I just want flexibility to take a look at the infrastructure, what makes sense. And I'm not disagreeing with, with what's said here, but it's a word and the option to change it is now, so why not?
Well, but it's in the paperwork that it would be either that lot or the other lot.
Yeah, you, you still have discretion to select lot one, block seven, or lot eighteen, block five. That's, that's completely discretionary to the council. The, the question is, yeah, do you want to tie the, the council or the city to Sparks Edition? Or do you want to leave it open with a may? You know, you may build it somewhere else, completely.
Have we decided on the location of that yet?
So we're trying to figure out?
In previous discussions, we were focusing a lot on the block eighteen, uh, which was the south one. Uh, when we were, when we came to council with our talking points, uh, or trying to hash out what to include for elements within the purchase agreement, that's the lot we were really focusing on. And then, like, like we were saying earlier, the shift to focus at the staff level and work with developer was, do we have the option to go up to the north lot due to the tie and connect the infrastructure quicker, so we're not waiting on phase two improvements and save on costs there? So.
Just the infrastructure cost will be cheaper.
All I'm asking is, all I, all I'm asking is, has this council settled on the fact that there will be a city hall? Number one, and number two, will it be in the Sparks Edition or possibly elsewhere? I'm not satisfied that we've met those two commitments as a council.
Okay, I guess, I'm not.
And that right there is my concern of why I would prefer you guys did may, but I understand why the developer would like more certainty.
I mean, when they were here before, we had a conversation about all the ins and outs of what, you know, gotta be two stories, we need this many windows, we need all of these things. And you guys all said, yep, yep, okay, so I just assumed we're going with Sparks.
So, so can I throw this out there? I know it's late. Would you be okay with tabling any decision on this stuff? I think, are you okay with that too, so we can modify these to get those changes incorporated that were presented? And then give you guys time to think about this further. If you want to make a decision tonight, that's fine, but it seems like, it looks pretty tired right now. And it's a pretty big decision.
Let's get those, get, okay, I'm, I'm waiting on tabling. I'd, I'd rather not, rather get this done tonight, but let's get this verbiage done.
If you want to get.
Yeah, if you guys want to get it done, get it done.
Very big decision that seems like there's.
Well, I mean, it seems like we're a little bit, uh, divided.
I mean, in my, in my mind, um, I see the distinction of the words, I get it. I mean, we, in this, which is what we always talked about, we have four acres of land dedicated to us for this purpose. And the little bit of additional at a, at a, at a nice reasonable rate, I don't know why we, I don't know why we wouldn't take advantage. It would be the most economical way to do it. And also, I just want to go on the record as saying, we have no timeframe or timeline for city hall. Um, it's a future concept, uh, but as far as.
It's probably not as far as you think.
And that's fine, but as far as saying.
Wait until drafted now, it better be within five years.
But as far as I'm saying, as far as it being the most economical to residents, it would be this, because we had land dedicated to us for it. That's just my opinion.
So the, the timeframe on city hall, and this is, it's been quite a while ago.
The agreement says we have to have it done within.
Well, city hall's been on standstill because we don't have a lot.
I know, but the agreement says we have to have it within.
That was additional land. I don't, I don't think that's necessarily specifically, specific to the.
Or they could buy one or another.
Five years.
I thought that was the additional land that we had purchased.
I think that's, I think that the, the five-year buyback period is for the public amenity lot, the one that the city doesn't pick for the city hall.
That's what I was thinking.
Which one is that?
Well, right now it's a flop, north or south, we have a decision.
The agreement gives you the flexibility, so we would have to identify one of the two lots would be the city hall lot, at least within that five-year period, and then the agreement allows the developer to be able to buy back the other lot at that trigger point if they would like to.
So it doesn't pertain to the city hall then, Lucas? It just pertains to whatever lot is going to have the public amenity.
To me, it would be, we would be both because the city would have to select within five years, but then that also means that you'd have to have a selected use for the other lot within five years, right?
You'd have a use for the other lot.
Right? I'm not over, I don't think I'm overthinking it.
I think you are.
If you're going to take five years to decide which lot to put city hall on.
That's not what we're saying.
I guess in my mind, we were going to have flexibility. We were going to have flexibility and then the amenity one, that was the five-year buyback, but yeah, maybe it's missing words, I guess, I don't know.
No, I, I don't think it's missing words. I think it has in there, it's just a matter of we identify what lot we'd be using city hall for, or go with the city hall for. Uh, but council, as you mentioned, is far out where we don't have a timeline, correct? We don't have a specific timeline saying, okay, we're going to break ground on city hall at this point. Uh, the council has set, has provided action or direction to this city on going through a construction management risk approach for that. We met with a group, a selection group for the C M A R approach. This was, oh, a couple of years ago now, two years ago, and they are really fixated on until we have a chunk of land to actually build this facility on. They're free, you know, wait, you know, it was, wait, we're not, don't want, we don't recommend you move forward to C M A R. So we've really been tied to, we don't have a lot yet, and that's been our hiccup. Uh, once we have a lot, so if council says go with one of those two lots, then we come back to you guys and say, okay, do you want us to pick up the C M A R process where you left off? And start getting that process going to where then we can start getting an architect or construction manager and hash out the process further. That process is going to take time, even if the council said at next meeting, go ahead and start that process back up. You're probably at a, uh, I would say nine months to a year out before you can even break ground. Because by the time you do, if we, the council expressed concern, so they wanted to have public involvement engagement of what that facility would be like. Um, by the time you have the public engagement, the design of something, you get it all squared away. I mean, you're looking at nine months to a year before you can actually even break ground, and then the construction can be a year, year and a half long, pretty easily, depending on what the building all entails. So even if we do say tonight, yep, go on certain lot, we're at two and a half years probably before a building can even be completed. It's probably longer.
Three years by the time it's all said and done.
And, and I'm just giving a ballpark, because I don't know how long the design, public involvement, different stages like that were, but that was a concern expressed by council, hey, we want to make sure that we engage the community. What would this entail? What does it have? But we have to have the land first to be able to do that, so. Sorry for a long rant there about it, but it was, I just want to make sure everybody knows the, or has a reminder of the back, the background behind it.
Well, to make, to make that even longer, I think the city council does, I think, be very concerned with timing of this city hall. Because we, there's ten developments that we've discussed so far, I think, Jase has my list for this year alone, not to mention all the ones that the city has done in recent years. Those residents are going to be expecting services from the city, and there's nowhere to put any additional staff. I mean, there, I, I see a very big concern with this city not having a city hall and not having one developed at this point. I don't know what's going to happen. If it's going to be that long to get a new one built, the city's going to have to look, yeah, the city's going to have to strongly consider renting a space until one's built.
Well, there's not really a space. This is a temporary setup here. And fire has agreed to let us be here for the next two years. However, this is still a temporary setup. And we don't have our own space. And when you look around the community, we really don't have a whole lot of spaces that are even available for that. Uh, the senior center is booked up most nights. Yeah, might have to work, we maybe work something out with the schools or something like that, but still, your hands get really tied, so.
But that's just with meetings.
And, and that, yeah, that's just meetings. Yeah.
So let's swing back to matters at hand here.
Yes.
You guys want to, do you want to sit and spend some time wording this up and coming back with us? Or we want, is there enough flexibility that we can do something tonight? That you guys can keep proceeding with this, that we make a decision tonight?
We can word it out, we're, that's no issue there. My issue is, it just seems like the council. My issue is, it just seems like the council was not at a point to make a decision on this. But if the council's at a point to make a decision on this, then by all means, make the decision and, and we'll modify the, the documents to reflect that. But I need answers on, do you want?
I can step in, if I'm the only voice of concern here, if everyone else is set on the Sparks property. I brought that up only as a sensitivity to the amount of discernment that there's been on this topic previously. I wanted to ensure we are all, and we, I, I do not want to go down the road where we all agree to this, and then somebody didn't understand something, or, or there was a misunderstanding about a timeframe or whatnot. I want it to be clear that once we do this, we are locked in to a timeframe on property. And if everyone's okay with that, I think we're moving forward. If everyone's not, I want them to have an opportunity to really get their head around it before we do this. We have to do this united.
And that's, that's what I want too. And if the council is united, I have no concerns with changing the may to a shall. There's, there's no concern there, then that's fine. But it's, it's, I just wanna make sure that this is, this is a big decision, so the council does need to be united.
It's a council, it's a council decision, so we're at a point in staff.
I don't foresee us choosing a different property than this part. I don't like the wording of shall, though, I'm just being honest, okay? I, I don't have any other plans anywhere else in mind.
We may have to live with shall. We may have to live with shall.
Okay. Um, then, then obviously, we gotta get it done within a certain timeframe.
Is it the five years?
But it's okay, if it's already clear with that.
I'll be all right with that.
Well, and it means, I mean, I don't mean to belabor it, but I mean, when you say within five years, you mean beginning a process within five years?
Agreed upon use.
So, so the question I have.
Yeah, agreed upon saying, yep, we're going to build this here. That's a, that's what my understanding of what developers.
Does, does the north property actually get us there any quicker as far as infrastructure?
Yes.
In terms of roads or access to this building, so we can actually use a building?
Yes.
Okay.
Because you would have infrastructure included in the, uh, what the developer's working on right now for Phase One. Uh, I believe some of the roads are there within Phase One adjacent to that.
Lot One from the north would come down.
Scroll up a little bit.
Well, Phase One Luther, the east-west road there on the north side of the Lot One there would be.
This, this lot, right, I mean, this Luther Avenue would be constructed. So right away, Lot One would have access to public infrastructure here. Um, under the agreement, uh, the, the city also has the ability to trigger the construction of Phase Two.
Now, we don't have to do the entire Phase Two, we can just do third and fourth, a block around Lot One.
But I mean, to show started, we just work with the Phase One, and then, like you said, we can trigger.
Exactly.
Yeah, Phase One would help you with construction, everything, and then we could trigger Phase Two to, just even we could scale down Phase Two, and we could say, okay, just get the streets right around that lot, or whatever.
The city can create its own improvement district later on, in the infrastructure.
And I think, you know, the, the reason that we've requested.
The stuff out that was discussed previously?
Yeah, it would come down from there.
Luther, that's Luther.
It'd be Luther Avenue.
Um, yeah, just the, the reason that we request the word shall instead of may, um, is really, I think we've been consistent throughout this process that we wanna know what's going into our, our development. Um, and I think that's kind of why the, we've, we've asked for some input on what goes in on the amenity, amenity lot as well? And why we've had the, you know, the architectural, uh, requirements for the City Hall. I mean, we just want something that's a value add to the development. And so, I mean, we don't wanna go through this exercise and then have the city change its mind four years from now, and then, you know, have this, this land tied up, you know, not, not know what's going on. So that was the reason for the, the request to, you know, lock it in on both sides.
Stephanie, you all right with the Sparks property?
I am, yes.
Naomi?
Yep.
Sarah, if we're all good, are you good?
Absolutely.
Okay, then let's get on with the.
So the, the next question is, are you good with estimated specials instead of certified specials? And then last one, last one, I'll add Lot Eighteen Block Five to that conditional section that just had Lot One Block Seven, so that's all I had.
Yep.
Do you want us to do these separate, or should we combine them?
You can combine them if you want, it sounds like you guys are in agreement on, on everything.
All right, somebody wanna make a motion then to accept this with the changes that they're going to make?
All right, I guess I can do that.
Okay, let me make the motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
You guys a second, all right? All in favor, say aye.
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 Guys, is there, is there any way that we can like table anything on here?
I've, I've tried to table multiple things.
I'm getting, I, I don't mean to be like disrespectful, but I'm getting like really, uh, mind boggled, and it's been a very long evening. Is there anything that can wait?
Anything after twenty-two?
I'm serious, I can get through.
We're too tired.
Probably get through this next stuff pretty quick.
We were a little tired to catch your joke there, Jim.
I'm so sorry. I hate asking.
We both, we all go, whoa, twenty-two.
We can get through twenty-one.
We can get through.
Jim's quick.
We can get through twenty-one.
Maybe we can skip portfolios with the city administrator.
Yep.
Make his optional.
Hey, I didn't have, no, I had one thing that I was asked to talk.
All right, let's go, number seventeen, let's go.
So number seventeen is for the water sewer, storm improvement, Street Improvement District Twenty Twenty Two Dash One. It's the Visto Industrial Editions, the pavement portion of that. Uh, the project is complete, what we have before you is a certificate of substantial completion and punch list for work remaining by all finished concrete relating to that project. Um, we have prepared the documentation and accept, and recommend approval on that. Um, all work has been completed, the date of substantial completion is November ninth of twenty twenty-three. So this is a document that the contractor has, has agreed to, and then our office has prepared and recommended. So, um, any items that are remaining on this need to be done in the spring, but it doesn't affect the substantial completion. So the difference between the substantial and the final completion is that they have the ability to work on those materials between that. So it's open, it's open to public, it's been open since the, the completion date we had stated, so there's nothing on here that's outstanding. It's just a matter of finishing up some paperwork on it.
So we just need to accept that?
Yep, you're just, you're just a motion to accept the certificate of complete substantial completion.
Make a motion.
Make some motion, can I get a second?
Yeah, I will.
Can I get a second, all right? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, the next item we have is Water Sewer Storm and Street Improvement Districts Twenty Twenty Two and Dash Six and Seven, South Dale Farms Fourth and Fifth Editions. What we have is the balancing change order, those two projects were tied together. Uh, we have balancing change order number four, which is a net increase of thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and five cents for, um, balancing the construction, the as constructed quantities, balancing the contract quantities to the as constructed quantities. Um, you have in your packet a copy of that, some ups and some downs, um, on here as far as the bid items are concerned. There is an explanation on here, there was nothing really out of the ordinary. Um, this was a relatively large project in that it was fourteen and a half million dollars. So in the end, it being thirty-three thousand dollars, um, for a balancing change order is not too bad.
Okay. Any concerns?
No.
Okay, let me look for a motion to accept. Make that motion, make some motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Step through to the second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right.
Motion carries, got the next one.
So the next item we have is sewer, storm and street improvement district Twenty Twenty Two Dash Ten. This is the chestnut and ironwood drive rehabilitation. Um, this one, we have change order number two, this one is a much more significant increase for the balancing change order. It's a little over four hundred and eighty-one thousand. You may ask, how does it get to be over four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars?
How did that happen?
The road was so far out of profile that when we put the estimate together for the, for repaving it and overlaying it, it took more material to get, to get the, um, center of the road up, so that the water would drain off to the sides of the road. So we did what we could with, with that. Um, I'd asked some of the field staff out there, I said, hey, what's the, what's the, what's the deal with this? And it was just, the road was either, was, it was to be flat, and we spot checked it, I mean, we could only check so many, so many places, but it was actually inverted in some other ones, where it took a lot more to bring that back up. And the whole purpose of that project, if you'll remember, was to force the water off the streets and into the curb and gutter. So we could have reduced the amount of asphalt needed and flattened it out, but then we're back to square one. And the reason this didn't come to you beforehand is because this is something that, as they're doing it, it happens. So it's not like, stop, wait for two weeks, I'll take it to City Council and come back. This is something that, as they're doing it, you know, you got curb on one side, curb on the other, three percent cross slope. It's not like, stop, let us come back. So we did what we could with some of the other items, trying to maximize or minimize any additional costs. But this one, in order to get that crown up, get the water off, it resulted in more, more mix and more, more peat and oil. And unfortunately, on a project like this, that's where the cost is in those, in those projects, so.
But you got it done, it looks good, right?
It, it's, it's, it's done.
They're not going to say that.
But it is a lot better.
It is considerably better than what it was.
I mean, over the summer, I had complaints.
Well, the biggest area we fixed, they came back and they fixed that. And then the other area that was of a lot of concern, there wasn't anything that could be done, it was just too flat. So we got the water off the road into the curb and gutter with concrete, it doesn't degrade like asphalt, there's water sitting on it. That's where it's supposed to be, so that's where we, that's where we landed, so.
Okay, here's what it is, guys.
Tough one.
Unfortunately.
All right, anyone wanna make a motion to accept that? Make the motion. Okay, Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Stephanie does a second, all right? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Next one, Jim.
All right, we have the preliminary engineering report for Water Sewer Storm and Street Improvement District Twenty Twenty Three Dash Two, which is Eighth Avenue South and Nelson Drive. Um, you've seen the report, the report talks about the existing conditions, the proposed conditions and that. So, excuse me, our project limits are from Park Drive South up to Eighth on Nelson. Nelson from Con Road Seventeen to the Lagoons, and then turn and go a little bit south on there. This, uh, street or this avenue is important for the Sparks Edition, like we just talked about. You just saw that this is the access into the Sparks Edition from the north. So, um, with that being said, we do have some constraints that we have to work through. We have seventy feet of right-of-way dedicated on Eighth, or through an easement on a, one parcel. We have fifty feet of right-of-way on the, uh, north section in, on Nelson Drive. Which makes things interesting when it comes time to urbanize and put curb and gutter and storm sewer in. So we're proposing a typical section on Eighth Avenue similar to what Wall Avenue is. Wall Avenue is two fourteen-foot lanes, curb and gutter, and then a shared use path on the south side. On Nelson, with fifty feet of right-of-way, we're proposing about twenty-four-foot lanes, I believe, let me look at the section here.
Say that again, what, how big are lanes?
Uh, twelve-foot.
Oh.
Uh, twenty-four top, total.
Oh, okay.
Two twelve-foot driving lanes with the curb and gutter on there. So we get a little more width, right now it's twenty feet. We've had the discussion numerous times as to what street width is over in that part of town. So we'd be gaining four feet and putting curb and gutter on there. So, um, that's the, the two sections that we went with, asphalt section on Nelson and a concrete on Eighth. Because Eighth still has the pseudo-industrial park on that south side. So, um, you'll see here, we've got some existing utilities, we've got a proposed layout of some utilities. We get back to the nuts and bolts of it, our estimate is about four point six million dollars. And that cost is to be assessed into the district that was determined or decided quite a, a couple of months ago now. So the last couple of pages are, are the special assessments based on the policy. And we've talked about this kind of at length, that the policy is what it is, it's what I have to run with from the start. And we know that this isn't gonna probably be the end-all, be-all. But it is, there is a breakout of all of this based on a each and a load factor.
What is that, what page is that on?
Twenty-five. Of the PDF, of my PDF.
And we're gonna have a public hearing on that.
So this one is over fifty percent of the land has been petitioned for, but we have to revisit the policy and make sure that.
But we, yeah, but we go over and above that, I mean, I still want the notices and the public hearing on this.
So technically, I'm double checking the policy here, and we technically say we had approved the preliminary engineering report after having a meeting. I believe you could do it before or after, because you need to be able to have the special, like, that engineer's estimate for the specials. And that's what the engineering report does provide, and that's what helps us be able to have the public input meeting. So what I would suggest is if you were to take action on the engineering report, then you could take action on the services agreement, however, on the preparing plan specs, I would table that for now.
Yeah, that's what I was, we kinda talked about that.
But like, like I said, my mentality, and I'm looking at the policy right now, I have it in front of me, it's same informational mean, but like I said, the engineering report tells you the estimated specials, and that really helps us be able to communicate that to the rest of us when they say, this is what the project entails, so. But yes, I would suggest you would table C, but you, if you'd like, you could go with A and B. Or if you want to table the other ones, you could, but it does give us the specials there.
Okay, you guys want to? How did we get to keep this moving on this one, guys? Because this is the Sparks area.
This, yes, this is the, the access to Sparks.
So any questions on the preliminary report? I went through it a little bit quick, twenty-six pages, but a lot of it's appendices and, and other stuff, so.
Sarah, you got any comments on that?
Nothing additional, no, thank you.
Okay.
I know.
What, you guys wanna do A and B and then table C?
I can discuss B too, before you, if you want to just deal with A right now.
We didn't discuss B? I mean, do we, do we have to continue?
I'd like to get.
Tonight?
I'd like to get to twenty-one, because it's imperative that we get that on paper.
It's difficult to make hard decisions when you feel rushed.
Okay, then you can table A, let's look at B. So B is our standard agreement that we've approved for Uvetcha and for Sixty-Fourth for our services. It's the exact same form, it's based on a percentage of the, of the construction. And it's, I just changed the, the names from Sixty-Fourth to, to, um, Eighth. So that works out, let me find the summary sheet here, oops, wrong page.
Jim, let me ask you something real quick on A, is there anything extraordinary in A that we haven't done a thousand times already? That's what I'm saying, I don't know, if you could just, well, do A and B.
The only hiccup that we've had with A on the reports is just the special assessments being that we started with the policy, knowing that there's gonna be some load factoring that is gonna be reevaluated, so.
And that would, that would be reflected in C at some point.
Yeah, well, it would be reflected once we, once we, um, address the load factor.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're just, we're kinda checking boxes right now. I, I don't, I don't mean checking boxes, but we're following the special assessment process.
Yeah.
That's what we're doing.
Again, nothing extraordinary here, this is just going through the motions, really. I'm gonna suggest that we go along with A and B and then table C until later, and then go with that one, keep this thing moving.
And I did review A and B, I didn't, I didn't have any other questions, you addressed them tonight. And I had already talked to Brett a little bit about C.
Okay.
So we wanna make a motion to accept them, A and B. Sarah, somebody?
And just, just a reminder, we will be working towards getting a meeting set for the public, for a public meeting for that district, so. Yep, there's a little, everybody will be, we'll still have that meeting set, so.
Yeah, make sure we give residents a decent advance notice of it, okay?
Okay, I'm looking for a motion on A and B, you guys to accept them.
I'll make the motion.
Stephanie makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, we will, uh, be able to see them, we'll bring that back next time then, all right?
That's fine, yep. And then item twenty-one is water sewer storm and street, so this is the final asphalt lifts for Lost River Fifth Edition, South Dale Farms First, South Dale Farms Third. We've talked about this one before, this, we've directed us to do the plans, the plans are done, they're going to be advertised in the paper with your approval next week. Uh, they'll be approved in the paper on Wednesday, and we'll take bids for it, bring the bids back hopefully in twenty-one days. So in the first, I think it's the first meeting in March, we, we have that. So I need your blessing to advertise, need your blessing to approve the plans and specs and then advertise for bids, so. These are pretty straightforward, there's not a lot of.
I'll make that motion.
I'll combine these two, okay, Jeff?
Yep.
Okay, Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, let me do the second, all right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 I'm gonna pull over the rest of this and look for a camera.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay, Stephanie makes a motion, do a drink, can I get a second?
A second.
Stephanie does a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Done.
Okay. Thanks for hanging in there with us.